Councilmember Cordova. Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Mayor Protam Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible and absolute liberty of justice for all.
Before we begin, how is the volume for those in the back? Can you hear? Okay, great. So, no need to adjust on that. And just as a reminder, if you would please mute your cellphones or turn them off so that we're not disturbed by that. And as many of you may not realize, the sounds at the back of the room do carry forward. So if you need to have a conversation, please step out because those doors being open, it does carry forward and we can hear, actually, almost all of your conversation. So, moving to the actual agenda item, the new business is city council visioning and goal setting for the fiscal year 2019-21 budget cycle. So we're going to hear from staff regarding our prior budget goals, our prior budget priorities, and hear from them concerns and input about how to proceed. And then we'll open for public comment, and then we'll close public comment, take a break, and then come back and finish the discussion from council regarding whether we want to affirm, change, adapt any of our goals, and then move to budget priorities with regards to those goals that we've chosen. So, staff, city manager?
I'm gonna stand up if that works. I just don't like sitting at a chair all the time talking because I get lost. So I do want to thank everybody. This is great. We didn't know whether to open the doors, so it's nice to see almost all the chairs filled up. I was hoping Samantha, our public information officer, kept putting this out. People are wondering what is this going to be? And it's really, we're not getting into the dollars today. We're gonna do a quick overview. Our Dean's our finance director, he's gonna go over, but very high level, just to give you a flavor of where we were, where we are, and what tomorrow looks like. But we also have, if you've come, when you do the public comment, we have questions. We've asked a number of staff to be here, so parks, fleet, police, everyone should be here that can help answer a question or two that comes up. Again, we're not gonna be doing the money as much. What we're really trying to look for, for those of you, actually, let me, how many took a survey that we had online? I'd just like to see. That's great. We had about 1,000 people, and I'll get into that in a minute, take that survey. And that was all done by themselves. No one knocked on your door, called you up. So it was really good to see such a turnout. Though it's, we have 43,000 people, that was still a very good turnout for such a short turnaround. So the goal today is really to ask, what do we want Lompoke to be? Is how I see it, because these goals that we're gonna be looking at and trying to set, when I've been here about eight months now, I've seen different goals. We wanna go one direction, we wanna go a different direction, a third direction might be good. So trying to get everybody in this boat rowing the same way at the same time towards a common goal would really be something that would be helpful to us. What we're gonna do, do we have the presentation? Just gonna give a quick overview of what we're going to try and do today. And I got the clicker here, okay. So, we had the network, little refreshments in the beginning, that seems to help draw people out. I'm starting the overview, and it's gonna be a few pages, not too many, because the goal is really to have the public here talking to the council, expressing what they see as goals and desires from their perspective. The end result is to then turn it back over to the council after they've heard everybody. And we're gonna be writing everybody's comments on the easels, and as we run out of room, we'll put them up on the wall. We'll take a break after that. We'll come back, and that's when the council will be doing theirs. So it's hoping to be done by noon. If we get to a point, we say, gee, we're only halfway through this, we can re-extend it. We can say, okay, we're gonna have another one of these things to then have the council have more time. We don't wanna force anybody to quickly come up with an answer or a solution today. So, as it says, identify what is the most important, what is most important to our community. Originally, we had something up there that said, "We're the most important things to the community." Well, things get way down into the dirt, it could be anything. So we really say, what is most important? You know, that high level, 50,000-foot level, they like to say, what's the most important part for the community? We're gonna review the prior goals, modify them, create new ones, change, you know, wipe them out completely if that's what the council would like to do. But again, it's looking at what they are. Then we're gonna go into the next steps as we get past that. The big one is, what is a goal? The goal is that far overreaching idea that you want to do. One of the goals we had last time was economic development, and you'll see these in a minute, public safety. You know, they're very big, they're very overreaching. If you were to ask somebody, okay, put economic development in the budget, well, I'd even be saying, what does that mean? Is it, you want some housing, you want some jobs, you want, what kind of jobs, what kind of housing? So it just says, this is what we're reaching towards. And I can read that up, the result or achievement toward which the effort is directed. Very high level, but we need those to start to get then all the way down to the priorities. Another one, which is actually above the goals, are values. You might say, I want the goal to be transparency. Well, that's actually a goal. Sort of like, and you know, if I can remember from my Boy Scout days, Boy Scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, and reverent. So I got them all still. Those are all values that you wanna live by as a person, not just the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, that's everybody. Those are the values. So those values then trickle down into what kind of goals do you wanna set up? So, values very top level, we should live by, then the goals. The objectives are, what are we trying to set out underneath the goals? Then you move down into the priorities, taking those different higher-level goals and saying, we wanna take and improve public safety by doing X, Y, or Z. Then you go down from X, Y, and Z into a project, such as we want to, you know, build a new police station, or fire station, or a library, or whatever the case might be, that becomes the project. And with those, we can then put dollars to that. We want a new library, we can figure out how much that's gonna cost, and we can put it into the budget. So it's, we're at that top level this time, trying to figure out what kind of goals do we want. The council then work on priorities. That translates back to the staff to go fit those into the budget somehow. So I said, we're not gonna touch much on the numbers, but we need to see where we are, where we were, where we are, where we're going to be. So it's a brief overview. The next council meeting, we're gonna go into more detail. So this is just to give you an idea, as you're coming up, and you say, I'd love to have an indoor football arena and move, pick your favorite team to come over here. Well, it's, it'll be tough to do because we don't have that type of funding. So this section here is just gonna, going to have Dean talk about, I don't know if you want, over there, okay.
I put this slide to entertain you guys while I cut up here. This is gonna be, like you said, a high-level view of the financial status of the city. If you look, this is the 2018 results. You look, we started with a $114,000 deficit. Our variance was 430, with an overall deficit of $545,000 for 2018. We look at 2019, we started with a variance, or a deficit, a beginning deficit of 526,000. Our, we're doing pretty good right now. Our sales tax numbers are a little bit low, part-pour tax are in line. TOT actually came a little higher than we expected and budgeted. Our salaries are about 300,000 deficit, but our operational lines are about the same. So we're really seeing a net move of only 123 variance from our budget, but it actually still puts us at 649,000 deficit.
Can you sort of explain how part of that is being done with the vacancies?
Yeah, if you go back, well, back to 2018, we actually had an average of about 19 vacancies. If you look at 19, we have, currently, we have 28, but we've averaged about 23, and that's why we have such a small variance from our budget, being pretty aggressive on the vacancies.
So, real quick, so the vacancies, for those, you know, if you go into a little more detail, that means these positions were budgeted and they had been filled in many cases, but as we saw, excuse me, the deficit coming, and that position opened up, we have not filled it. We've just left it vacant. So that impacts the different departments that have had those vacancies hit. So the services might be slower to the public, or had to go away completely. And so there is a downside to keeping them open, other than we are trying to keep the budget as balanced as possible.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can you go back one slide? So, we were presented with a balanced budget, correct?
Yes.
Can you tell me why the numbers are so far off?
Why we're negative? If you go back, you look at the bottom, there's a one-time anomaly that was put in the budget, a one-time transaction of 750,000, which put us in balance. We really weren't, if you looked at just operational level, so that's a good point.
As well as the number of expenses, we're higher than the anticipated revenues, though.
Yeah, and a lot of times, that's, so we have money that if we wanna do road projects, we have too much revenues and too much expenses. You can see the variances on the right. Matter of fact, when I'm talking about this one here, about our variances, I talked about the salaries and the operational budgets. I took the road funds out of that discussion because they're kind of a wash. But I'll, just to let you know, I will drill down on this thing on March 19th, we're gonna talk a lot more about.
But the only reason why I bring it is because part of, only part of the story is being represented, that when we approved the budget, we approved the budget with monies that were supposed to be there. When the monies didn't come in, that's why the vacancies became apparent, or we had to move forward with the vacancies.
You're absolutely correct, and especially in 2018.
Right.
Yeah. We were pretty, we missed the mark on a lot of our revenue numbers that we anticipated. Based upon this, the thing that concerns me, I think, the most is we have about 400,000 of unassigned fund balance. And officially, at June 30th, we will be on our uncertainty fund. That makes me nervous. To me, that's kinda like the gas gauge, you know, on empty, the light's coming on, or the low-fuel light's coming on. That's about where we are. If we look at the projected numbers, and it kinda makes sense, you know, I showed you how much we were deficit and after we held vacancies. These deficit numbers are actually indicative of the budget having all the positions filled. So keep that in mind. That's if we filled all the positions, based upon our service levels that's been in our budget, that's what this would look like. And I encourage you to go online and look at our interactive budget tool, gives you an idea of what we're up against. That's about all I have. I'm trying to keep it high-level so you guys can concentrate on goals. I did wanna say thank you for everybody coming out, you know, the meeting of the minds, you know, more people, the better. Thank you.
So as we go back, typically, council to council to council, they'll set goals, and then when the next council's seated, they'll either reaffirm the goals, make some modifications, completely redo the goals. So in 2010, we had goals established. 2015, there were new goals, modified goals were established. And these were the last top-level goals that were established: economic development, public safety, parks and rec, infrastructure, code compliance. So, the tough part with this is, as I said a little earlier, what do you mean by economic development? So, and I've actually had a council member bring that up to me, going, well, what does parks and recreation mean? And does that mean fixing the parks? Does it mean this? We didn't have at that time any description of what that meant. And so we're gonna go in here and show some other examples of what other cities do to then make it easier, not just for the staff, but for the public to see, say, okay, economic development would mean X, Y, and Z. But this is what we had then. And I guess, my other note here is, as you set a goal, all cities tend to have similar goals. And you'll see, I have some examples of other cities up here. They might say a different word or two, but the goals of all cities is to have the best quality of life as possible for its citizens. That's why they're coming up with these goals. Some goals may not have a financial issue, so that city doesn't say, hey, we need better economic development, because it might be Beverly Hills, and they don't need, have to worry about that. Someone might, hey, we need more homeless work done, like San Francisco. Well, we have some homeless issues going on here, but it's nothing like it is up north. So, cities will have similar goals, but they're all a little different here and there. So then you come down to the next level. So this was from the February 27th council meeting. This established council priorities. So we have to go through the market rate, housing incentives, business incentives, public safety, personnel retention, retrofit, Fire Station 1, and down through the list. So if you go back the slide, the first one said economic development. If you come to the priorities, you know, you could say, number one and two reflect economic development. That's the priority. So that's sort of the next one down. Create market rate, housing incentives, and business incentives. So then the next one down from that level, we're gonna take that and try and fit that into the budget, is what does that mean? Does that mean we reduce building permits by a certain amount? Do we do something on the housing incentives and reduce some impact fees, or something else that might drive that, that part of the development in there? Business incentives, people coming in, you know, a sales tax rebate, if they come in and they produce a certain amount of sales tax, we'll give them back X amount of dollars once they produce that. So that would be sort of the economic development side of it. If you look at the next couple, public safety, personnel retention, retrofit, whatnot, that could be related to public safety. Parks rehab, I have that down as upgraded restrooms, turf at the city parks. So we're going through, you know, the last one, it's, the code compliance would really be sort of the business counter, is what the priority says. But if we can have the people come in and do the proper plan submission, do the proper permitting pulls and whatnot, that helps with the code compliance. The people are coming in and they're complying with whatever is needed. So, these priorities were fitting with the top-level goals. A little longer, and it's not fun to sit and listen to me, but here's the three examples that we picked. And they're not saying these are the best, they're not the worst, they're just three that were from California. So Oakland, what they've done is they pick three. It's not good to have more than three to five goals, because then how do you, how can you work on anything? Because you have limited staff, limited resources. So they decided to develop a sustainable city, and then describe what that is. Build a community and foster, build community and foster livable neighborhoods, and then ensure that all Oakland youth and seniors have an opportunity to be successful. So then below that, they've given descriptions for the public, as well as staff, to go out and try and meet that in their budgets. Just up the road, from the city of Paso, they had five. They had housing, with a description of what it was. Economic vitality, which is also, could be economic development. Infrastructure, how do we maintain and keep our infrastructure going. Community character, that's something, too. And I've heard that many times. We don't want to be a 200,000-population city, and I would agree with you. What do we wanna be? We're at 43,000. How far do we wanna go? There's different breakpoints from the economics of private businesses that will come into a town. When you hit the magic 50 to 55,000, then you get all these other great little things. You go a little higher, you get these little things. So it becomes a discussion of how big does the city wanna be, and to what level do they wanna grow? Community partnership and engagement. How can we, as a city, partner with other businesses, nonprofits, whatever that could be? We had the group in the other day about the spaceport. Well, that would be a partnership that would benefit the entire city, so that was something we could, we could work on. Moro Bay, theirs is a little, a little different. They put objectives below theirs. The only one I see that would be tough, and I would call it not a goal, is number two, because that gets into an actual project. So that would have to go down either into a priority, priority level, or a project level. Number two might be better off in the public infrastructure, facility maintenance, and improvement, because they do have, they have this sewer treatment plant up there that they need to do something with. So these are just a couple of the examples out there. It doesn't say we have to follow them, doesn't say those are the best, the worst. Just sometimes, if you're not sure what to do, those are, it's best to look what others have done in the past. So we've been looking at the goals and definitions first, talking to Mike. Goals and definitions first. We've looked at the prior goals and priorities that we're here from 2010, 2015, and 2017. And then we're just now looking at the different examples from the other cities. Here's the part that's interesting, and I do appreciate the entire city, you know, all 1,000 roughly people that took the time, took the effort. And there was 126 pages of written responses, so it wasn't just check the box. People took the time. Some people had, they, very long responses, so it was very well-received. I think we do this again the next time, we publicize it even more, we get that out there even earlier and get a better response. We can even maybe try and get some follow-up. Did you happen to put it in? Go do your survey. But the top two of the six that were available from the prior goals came out to be economic development and public safety. I mean, they were neck and neck. One was 78%, one was 77%, so essentially a tie. You can see the other ones, well, you can't really see very well, but the other bars were underneath that. Parks and recreation was third, infrastructure, code compliance, and then other. And under other, we had to compile that, and that included housing, address homelessness and crime, tourism, and the city's image. So, if they were all equal, then it would be tougher for the city staff and the council to say, well, what are we gonna do? You all like the same thing. But we're seeing here, public safety and economic development are by far the two biggest priorities that the citizens would like to see. Another one, I like this because it's more of a descriptive look. These are, it's called a word cloud, and it tells you, it takes all that 126 pages, and it pulls out all the words, and it puts them in there in a ratio of how many times they were written down. So jobs, housing, business, police, tourism, you can see all of these different pieces. They all make up a very vibrant, flourishing city. So we need to look at how can we incorporate all of that into these goals, and then take those goals into a priority, and then down into the budget. So, some of those, if we were to go back and do even one more level down on that one, you know, there's some, it's hard to read on there, but officers, safety, crime, law, some of those you could group together, and that would create a larger word cloud for those different, different areas. Business, tourism, those different things go together. It's just, it sort of matches what we were talking about on the actual survey of the choices. So now we have to move forward. We have a survey, we're soon have what the council would like to talk about and discuss is what they wanna see as goals, which then gives us the directions for staff to go march and put together the budget. So on this one, we seem to have heard what the public wants, but what's gonna happen next is still that overall question, what does Lompoke wanna be? Again, I've been meeting since I've been here with many different groups, different nonprofits, for-profits, everything. And I haven't been able to come away to see what we wanna be. And I think that's sort of the piece that's lacking, on what does Lompoke wanna be? We don't have anything definitive. We could survive, but we're not gonna flourish, as you see other areas that have really picked a course of action and went forward with it. So we need to come together as a group, what do we wanna be in Lompoke, and how do we get there? So with this, I'm going to turn it back to the mayor and let her open up the public discussion and give her comments.
Again, thank you to staff for pulling that together. Thank you to the public for participating in that survey. And finally, to all of you for taking the time out of your Saturday to be here and provide that additional layer of speaking directly to what you and your peers want from our community. So we're gonna open it up. It is a three-minute timeframe, like we normally do for council. While we had the yellow cards, given Stacy, our city clerk is sitting behind us, don't worry about trying to hand those in, but it would be helpful, if you don't mind, to at least state your name, so that she can keep it for the records. And it's also helpful that if you have any comments or concerns that you mention, it allows us to be able to identify you and reach out to you later to have those conversations. So, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please feel free to step up to the microphone, and somebody left their glasses. All right, okay.
And one other, you know, one quick thing, I mentioned it in the beginning. So as you come up, we're gonna write down all your ideas. And as we start to plaster the walls up there with them, if they're similar, you know, we want more police officers, someone already said that, we're just gonna start doing hash marks on it. But that's going to help us, as we go back and compile it, sort of like that word cloud. We're going to then come up with, what did everyone focus on the most? And we'll bring that back at another meeting, because we can't do that right here, but it'll help the, help guide the council on their, on their goals. So try to, as you come up and speak, try to at least get that main point of what you went across that we can write down during your time. Thank you.
And queue up, so that we are efficient with our time, and don't wait to see who's going to get up next, so it's really clear that there's several people who wanna speak. So floor is open, it's yours. Go for it.
Good morning, Mayor Osborne and councilmembers. My name is D.A. Taylor. I was the one who wrote you an email about why I am considering leaving Lompoke. And you've all read it, but my basic thought is this: Lompoke's goal should be to be a nice community in which people can live. And currently, we have so many public safety issues with inadequate police protection. I have homeless people in my alley, I have people going up and down the streets, you know, stealing things from neighboring cars, things like that. And I think, as a small business owner, I have problems with that, and I have problems being able to recruit people, you know, clients. And I think, for me, the most important thing is before we can do economic development, before we can improve our parks, before we can do anything, we absolutely have to have a community that is safe, and we don't have that. As a single female, I cannot walk alone in my town, and I grew up here. I was born in the old Lompoke hospital. I lived in Vanderburg Village when I was a child. I have spent most of my adult life in the city limits. And I, I'm not safe. I cannot walk my dog in Ryan Park because there's shootings. I cannot walk near the hospital because a doctor was, you know, recently almost strangled. This is the hugest problem that Lompoke has, is that we, as a community, are not safe. Our police department, and no disrespect intended, is completely ineffective. And until we can get that under control, nothing else can stem, because Lompoke has established itself as being the armpit of Santa Barbara County. Thank you, Mr. Carver Hall, for that rude comment. But the truth is, I hate to say that he's right, when the crime is so out of control. And I talked to Councilman Mosby about a week ago, saying, one of these days, innocent bystanders are gonna be hurt. And a week later, a 17-year-old girl was murdered because of a shooting. And so I think that has to be our priority before we do anything else. All these other things are important, but if people are leaving town because they're not safe, you can't build anything. I know many middle-class and business owners and people that I, you know, talk to, even just in the networking, that are talking about, I have a business here, I'm being recruited away, it's not safe here, I'm thinking of leaving. And my experience here is not unique. I have many friends who are getting ready to leave as well. So I wanna thank you all for your time, and thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Good morning, my name is Ron Fakin, I live in the city of Lompoke, and it's gonna sound like there's an echo in the room, because I'm gonna say basically the same thing. On March, on March the 4th, about 7:30 PM, two concurrent incidents occurred, which required all of the resources that were on duty of the police and fire department. All of them. the resources that were on duty of the Police and Fire Department, all of them. So what does this have to do with your budget? Well, some of you advocate cutting the Police Department. Some of you advocating cutting the rescue crew. And even others want even more police officer reductions. The concurrent incidents on March the 4th occurred as only one dispatcher was available to answer the 9/11 calls, dispatch all of the on-duty public safety resources, request mutual aid from the sheriff and the county fire departments, and initiate a recall of several off-duty officers and detectives, one person. You might be surprised how many times we rely on outside aid from the county. I'm sure that the fire chief can tell you how many times that is. But keep in mind, their primary priority is their area of responsibility, not ours. Even when you call them, they may be miles away and take quite a while to get here. Call for Vandenberg to come in. Once again, they have to get their commander's approval, then they can respond, and it takes them a while to get here. The shooting's a high-profile case, and while a homicide like this is rare, other shootings, acts of violence, structured fires, fatal traffic collisions, and non-fatal crashes that require the jaws of life occur every day. I'd urge you to ask your police and fire chiefs to provide you with a catalog of how many times a month that all their resources are committed to either a single incident or multiple concurrent incidents throughout the city. You might be surprised. Your most basic goal and responsibility is to provide adequate public safety staffing at the requested levels that your professional police and fire chief has indicated they need to keep your city safe. This is the real world. This is not a game played out on a budget tool. This is real life. Once you've fully funded the public safety element at the staffing levels that the police and fire chief request, then you can spend the money on anything you want, whatever's left over. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Hank Alina, a longtime resident of Lompoc. I won't say how many years in Lompoc and so forth. And I came, the family came to Lompoc in 1962. And in the '60s and the '70s, there were the glory days of Lompoc. And what I mean by the glory days is the glory days of the Lompoc Unified School District. And things have changed over the years. And when I saw the goals that were here this morning, and talking and so forth, I did not see anything about the partnership of building a strong partnership with the school district. We have two rivers in Lompoc. We have the Santianas River, and we have three bridges across that. Then we have another bridge that's kind of invisible, a river, it's kind of invisible. And that river's between the school district and the city. People coming to Lompoc, we talked about the economic development, people coming into Lompoc having a job at Vandenberg, for example, and the first thing they're going to ask, "What's the housing?" And the second question they're going to ask, "What's the school district?" We've lost three bond elections, and I'm not saying anything about the academic program and so forth. So I would really like to see one of the goals, the possibility of how do we develop a more partnership with the Lompoc Unified School District. Now, the other thing, going on the other side of the fence, the Lompoc Unified School District also has to make a commitment in their goals for a partnership with the city, so it's a two-way street. So I hope that maybe one of making that movement to bringing together the school district, because it has a great economic impact on our community. And I, being with the school district for 40 years and stuff, I just looked at the school district, and now in the last three years, I've become very much involved with the city government. And I'm learning that the education system of any community has an economic impact on that thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that feedback.
Good morning, council members. My name is Reverend Eric De La Cruz. I recently started a ministry here. The day, the week that we actually started our ministry, and our ministry is called "In His Hands," my son was speaking to his girlfriend over the phone, and they heard a gunshot. Come to find out, it was one of their good friends that actually committed suicide. And so from that moment on, our very first week of starting a church and trying to promote our church, we said, "We've got to do something about this." So we created a focus group with the youth of all of Lompoc, from 13 to young adult to 19. And every Thursday, we do some type of team-building activity, a place where the kids can come and learn how to relate to one another. I thank you, Mr. City Manager, for showing examples of what other cities do to be successful. I think one of them really got it right, because they put youth on there. All the other cities miss that. And I think a good way to address public safety is to invest into our youth and to really provide something for them to do. Escape park's not enough. You go to the skate park right now, there'll probably be teenagers there smoking cigarettes. And so we need to do more than that. You know, there's so many great reactive programs that are available, but I want to be proactive. I want to get to the teenagers before they have to join gangs. I want to get to the teenagers before they're committing suicides, and so that's our goal. And so even recently, I even called the city and asked, "I want to do a peace and hope in the park for the kids." I got feedback, "Well, we need to figure out if we've got enough toilets. We've got to know how many people are going to be there. We've got to get this kind of permit. You've got to get the health department involved if you want to do hot dogs." And that could take up to, you know, to three weeks, to three months. Well, how many more teens need to die in that period before we actually step up and do something? My ultimate goal, and I know my time's running out, is to have a youth imagination dream center. And so if we were able to create this dream center where the kids can come, we provide some kind of curriculum. I'm a chef by nature. I wear many hats. And so if we created some type of curriculum for at-risk, or not even at-risk, but teenagers or young adults that need a different direction, where they could come, learn a skill, they could learn how to cook, but even in a restaurant setting, you learn more than cooking. You learn how to clean. You need to learn accounting. You learn how to be responsible. And so if we had this dream center where they could do that, we had people that came in and taught them music. At our last Thursday meeting, I told the kids that we're going to do this thing in the park, or we're going to do some kind of event, and I want you teens, we've got about 40 teens that come, represent from every different school. And I said, "I want to create a song, a positive song, a positive message about the youth that have..." And I'm not going over time, please give me 15 more seconds. "I want to have a positive song for the youth that promotes a positive message." And come to find out, a young girl said, "I've already been writing a song." And it was her first time coming to our Thursday meeting. And so we let her get up and sing her song. And then afterward, it was such a beautiful song. Afterwards, I was able to speak to her in the parking lot, and she said, "You don't know this, but that little girl, that young girl, that 17-year-old that got shot in the head, she reached out to me two days before she got shot. And she knew I was battling suicide, and I didn't even really know her, but she knew of my story. She reached out to me and said, 'You're not alone. People go through it.'" And then two days later, she was shot in the head. And so we want to invest into the city. What kind of city do you want to be? I think we need to be a city that's for the youth. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is George King. I've been here 35, 38 years. I was on the first development company that the city of Lompoc put together back in 1980s. And what we did as a committee, we selected one person from the various entities of town, not getting, let's say, 15 auto dealers. They got together, we had one representative. I was a representative of the hotel industry here, where people represent restaurant, gas station, auto dealers, grocery stores, the senior center, the flower seed company, Diet Termites Earth Company, and the wine companies. We met once a month, not only with us, but the members of the city council, one or two members. We talked about the city as a whole, what we can do to develop. We fought as Economic Development Committee when the space shuttle lost and the buildup and they canceled things here in town. Newspapers went out, started publishing that we, Lompoc, will be a space-age ghost town. And then the other time, a year later, we had the Crips and the Blood gangs coming up at Lompoc, the big gang. Other communities, I mean, other newspapers started talking about a city under siege. So when you talk about something about space-age ghost town, city under siege, there is no economic development. You've got to sit down and figure out what we're going to do. And the big impact we had as a community, the town is dirty. We all have, everybody in this room have little things that we said, "We have guests coming, we better clean the house up." The relatives, "Oh, we'll just fix this house up. We're trying to sell it." Everybody tries to fix something in their house. But when you drive down the streets in this town, you see concrete curbs coming undone, you see weeds underneath the trees, you see trash and everything on the side. When you go to buy a house, you go to buy a place, economic development, a putting a business in town, you drive through town, you drive through the streets, you look around, what's nice, what's not. But when you walk in this town, you see a lot, a lot of trash on the streets. We come up with a flower industry to put plants and flowers in, put plants and everything. So when you drive down, especially the Ocean Avenue, you see the pots, they're supposed to have plants in it, all the plants are dead. Weeds are falling trees everywhere. Nobody's picking up anything that the average person will see driving this town. Once you got your location clean, and it looks nice, then you talk about economic development. You drive to this town, and you see the housing area is an area. We tried to get code enforcement. Everybody thought it'd be no good. No good, look at the trash. Cars, five, six cars in the driveway, driving down a main street that people would see. So the economic, get your house cleaned up, get your neighborhoods cleaned up, then everybody has a chance to say, "What are we going to spend for economic development?" You try to spend money now, and you're not getting the cooperation from the community. Everybody has to do something. Our city, us, don't have the money to do all the street cleaning. So housing, the people first, everything in town first, then you try to sell it. You can't sell anything that's really bad. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Anne Mouchay. I'm a past city council member. Things have already been said that I was going to say, but I do agree with Mr. Fink. First thing of all, we have to feel safe. And I believe it was last year or a year before, some members of this council decided not to fill some empty positions on the Police Department on their backs. And since then, I just commend the Police Department and the Fire Department for working so hard for, with limited facilities and limited employees. I would urge you to change your goals instead of economic development first, but public safety first, because I do believe everything will fall into place. Once we feel safe, and I know the police and fire work their tails off for us to feel safe, and sometimes, you know, things happen, and you can't help that. The gentleman was talking about the children. If you go to our library, you will see children there all the time, teenagers. I am speaking as the president of the Library Commission, but we do help a lot of children at that time, all different ages. So, and then economic development, I don't know how many times we've stood here and talked about this. I know Mayor Osborne talked to a group about being positive and so on and so forth. But I do commend the Police Department for the hard work they're doing on this last case, and I would urge you to start with that as your number-one priority, and make sure that they are fully staffed with the things they need and the personnel they need to keep us safe, so people don't move out of the area. As I said, I think it'll all fall into place after that, but please consider that as your first priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Are you ready? We're the Reese Santian family, and we moved to Lompoc a year and a half ago from Santa Barbara. And we're both professionals in Santa Barbara that moved here because we could afford buying a house. And we have a lot of friends that are in our shoes, where we can't afford to live in Santa Barbara and give our son the American dream that we had growing up. And so we saw this beautiful town. We have friends that work here, and were born and raised here, and we decided to move. Within eight months of moving here, our house got broken into, and my security was taken away from me immediately. The police that came and responded to the call were very compassionate and very nice, but they shared with us that they couldn't even look for fingerprints, because they don't have that money in the budget. So basically, they just took the report and took pictures of everything, and if they found anything, they were going to contact us. And the police officer did stay in communication with us, but nothing was found. And I don't care about the material things, but the safety part is what concerns us. We have wonderful neighbors, and they are long residents of Lompoc, and the community is really beautiful. I do believe that your Police Department needs more funding. Growing up, born and raised in Santa Barbara, I lived on the east side my whole life, and I never felt unsafe. And that's like the bad part of town in Santa Barbara. Police all the time, driving around, and I hardly ever see police driving around our neighborhood here, and it's near a not-so-good side of town. So I really advocate for more funding for the Police Department. You have this huge opportunity with families like ours, where you would have more young families, middle-class families, come here because of the situation in Santa Barbara and the opportunity you have here, the space. But they're not. They're scared of coming, and I understand why. We were a little naive, thinking that, "Oh, we hear all these stories, it's not going to happen to us," and then it did. But all our friends are buying condos in Beelton, the new ones that they're building there, or they're going to Ventura and doing the commute, or going to Santa Maria. So just please, invest in your community, give the police more funding, and so people can feel safe. And I think you'll have more economic growth that way. If they don't feel safe, how are people going to invest in your town? Does it make sense? So yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
My name's Peter Lucero. I'm a resident here for 10 years. The Air Force brought me here, so I'm a retired Air Force officer. I work for the post office part-time just to keep me busy. So that being said, I really like it here. The kids are here in the school system, and it's rooted us, so we decided to stay and retire here. So these problems seem to have been happening the whole 10 years I've been here, but I heard two things today that I think I want to reemphasize that could make a difference, and that is, we need to identify who we are as a city, just like it works on an individual level as well as a large city level, right? So if you identify who you are, you will go in that direction. So a name or a title that I'd like to suggest is, we should be a destination. Okay? And that means, we want to be here, we want to come back here when we go out on vacation or to Santa Barbara, we want to come back to Lompoc. And we want, like we heard earlier, people to bring their families here for the schools or to develop property here. So a destination would be a good motto, perhaps. That being said, I think everything else would fall in line, right? Safety concerns would come through. What's interesting in the city to develop would What's interesting in the, in the city to develop would come through. So again, I think a destination as a title, as a concept, may help solve the ills that we're concerned about. And then second, I would not want to go in the direction that any other city has went just because maybe it was successful for them, so I wanted to suggest, as far as city planning goes, that we should look to another model that has been in the news and has been helpful, and it's called friend, it's like people-friendly urban planning. So instead of car-centric, I don't think that's ever been brought up, instead of something car-centric, which really takes people out of the equation, if we build the city around a people-friendly urban planning, like they, like one example is Europe, there's some areas where people just, they just gather, and that seems to be really an interesting way to develop the city, and Lompoke would be unique in that, in the entire area. And where you have a European flavor with solving, so it's kind of a tie-in. So those are just a couple of ideas to make it a better place, and I hope we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Sue Copeland, and I agree with our previous speaker here that we really want to have a city identification. I think the most obvious one, or one of the obvious ones for our areas, is revolving around space. And right now, because of the, not just nationwide, but worldwide, increase in interest in space and space activities, and with nationally looking at having a space force, and I think we really need to work on that. I appreciate that we started the meeting with looking at our budget, okay, and where we are, and how, how we're doing, and it was discouraging to see that we're going more negative, continuing to go that direction. So how can we improve that? And I think that's got to be a focus, because we can't fund things without money. We can't have the services unless we have the money to pay for them. So for me, economic development would need to be up at the top, and I really think we need to focus on Vandenberg Air Force Base, partnering with them, bringing in space and space-relevant companies here. It's a beautiful area. It costs less to build here for the companies than, let's say, up in Silicon Valley. Let's make ourselves known for this and provide that. We need to expand our boundaries, our city boundaries, because we are impacted. We don't have space to grow. So I think we really need to look at that. How can we expand the boundaries so that we can bring in more companies? And of course, we do need some more housing, but the companies are going to bring in more of the revenue. For our economic development, we keep, you know, yay, new businesses coming in, but the only reason that business is coming in is because another one failed before it, okay? We're putting in new, replacing failed businesses with new businesses, and a couple of years later, they failed, we bring in new businesses. Let's see if we can keep our existing businesses and expand. And again, we need space to do that, we need to expand. I also agree with education, being educator for 23 years here at Lompoke Unified School District, we need to work on giving more opportunities for our youth, not just inside the classroom but outside with our city. I would love to see our students prepared and trained for positions out on base, positions here, that can, where they can earn a living wage and raise their families and keep their families here. I've had my children grow up here, and they've had to leave to get better-paying jobs. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Delacruz, I'm Eric Delacruz's wife. I actually grew up here in Lompoke, and when we moved away, I swore I would never come back. I actually told my husband that if he brings me back here, or we get a van, I want a divorce. I ended up with a van back in Lompoke, and I actually love it. I love this city. We came back with a passion, and I don't want my children to grow up the way that I did, resenting Lompoke. I want them to be proud of the city that they live in, and I want them to know that they are safe here, that they have, you know, some places to go, and right now, I don't feel like they have that. One thing my husband didn't get to add is that we're not looking for a handout, we're just looking for help from the city to be able to do what it is we feel we're called to do with the youth. They need a place where they can feel like they can, you know, have somebody to talk to, they have somebody that can help them shape their future, because if we don't do that, it's going to lead them to have opportunities to hang out at parks, hang out at places where they shouldn't be, and get into trouble. We actually had an incident in our neighborhood, it's probably been about a year now, but our house was the only house that didn't get hit when everybody was being robbed, their cars were robbed, their, their, things were stolen. It was a young person, it was just a young kid, you know? And if they don't have a place to go, an outlet to do, they're going to get into crime. So we have to reach them before they get to that point, and that's our goal. We want to let them know that they don't have to lead a life of crime, that there's better options for them, there's better ways for them to make money, there's better ways for them to reach their goals, to do all of that, and we want to be able to help them. I want my, I have four children, I want them to grow up proud of where they live, and to build their families here, and shape the community that we have, and something that this community has been great with, we have a lot of wonderful businesses here that have helped our youth group, they've donated food, pizza, you know, tacos, all of that, and it has really taught our youth group that generosity generates change. Generosity generates change. So if this community would be generous with their youth, it's going to make a difference, it's going to generate change. So we just hope that we would be able to have the city's help to reach out to these youth and be a blessing to them, so that they don't grow up to live a life of crime and commit suicide, and just go in the direction that they're all going in right now, because it is happening. They are committing crime, they are committing suicide, they are, you know, doing things that they shouldn't be doing because they don't have a place to go. They, I know the library is a great resource, but a lot of kids don't see that as someplace that they want to go and have the desire to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good morning, my name is Justin Mouchet, I've been a resident here in Lompoke for 25 years now. I retired from the aerospace business, where I worked for 40 years. My comments in dealing with the city of Lompoke and watching the politics here for the last 25 years is, the city has really been on the edge financially for many, many years. And recently, the city's been hit with what every, every other city in the state has been hit with, and that's Kelpers. Kelpers has asked everybody to donate to help solve the budget shortage problem at Kelpers. So Lompoke has got its debt, $70 million. How are you going to deal with that debt? Well, the one way to deal with it is to shut down the city, shut off everything, lay off all the fire and police and everything in that. Or the other way is to find a way to pay the $70 million debt. And I'm proposing that, and I have proposed over and over, that if you want to keep on having a viable city, you got to provide services. You can't provide services without the funds, you need more funds. The way to get more funds, raise the sales tax. That is the number one way that all the other cities and counties in the state has solved that problem. You weren't asked whether or not you wanted to pay this $70 million debt, you were told to do it, and we've got to do it, whether we like it or not. And shutting down the city is not the way to do it. We can't do any of those things over there, none of them. We can't plan anything, as long as we got to pay this big debt. And the way the other cities are doing it is raise the sales tax. I talked to Joe Holland the other day, and he said, well, the next time, we can put a sales tax on the budget, on the voting agenda, is in March 2020, and in November 2020. So we have two chances there, to pass the sales tax, which will address seriously this huge $70 million debt. This is really the only way to solve the problem, unless you want to shut down the city and lay off everybody. And we've seen all the losses in people who have left here, and they have to leave, and we have to shut down all of our services because we don't have enough money, and it's being shown up here over and over. So I recommend for financial security of the city, and that's what you ought to put up there, financial security of the city, that we put on the ballot in 2020, March, the sales tax. And this would be a general tax, and we would then have an ability to pay for it and pass it by a simple majority. The other thing I'd like to recommend is that the city, I know, the city, take an active, active, proactive effort to get this done. All of you have to get out and promote getting it done, to get the sales tax passed, and all of us go on to doing all the wonderful things people here would like to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mouchet.
Deb Andrews. Kind of like a broken record, we've talked about this a lot. It's called broken windows policing. When your town is clean, when you pay attention to the dirt and the weeds and the streets, other people pay attention as well, crime goes down. There's a lot of research about that, so we've talked about that a lot. What are you doing with your money? Do you have a time clock at City Hall? I understand employees can work scattered hours. That's great. But if you need a certain number of people on a truck, and you don't have those people in the department, it's a problem. So I would suggest you look at what you're doing with the money right now. As far as kids, you bet. Closing the library over Christmas was a disaster. I think you need to think about kids and families first. A real problem in Lompoke is that the schools are not teaching reading and math. That causes a huge problem for youth as far as their extracurricular activities or getting a job. What do they have to look forward to if they can't read well or do math? The school is well aware that their curriculum is ineffective, I'll be glad to talk to anybody that's interested. So is it intentional? I think we need to stop and think about that. What do children do that don't know how to read well and aren't able to do math? That's reason and logic, and that causes problems. Another thing we've done is welcomed cannabis to Lompoke. Research shows that there's a direct correlation to the use of cannabis or marijuana and the development of schizophrenia. We also have not addressed mental health services. We need to do that. But I think first and foremost, we need to look at what we're doing with every single penny and clean up our town. I've had the opposite experience with police and safety, I'm surrounded by them all the time. I feel very safe.
Good morning, my name is Jacob Delacruz, I'm the son of Eric and Tiffany Delacruz. What I kind of just wanted to talk about is, it was actually like, sort of my idea in a sense, to start the youth group, after someone that I knew and I had had conversations with and seen in the halls of schools, had actually taken their life. And I felt like, and many of my peers can agree, that we need more things to do in Lompoke, and I've been saying this since we actually moved to Lompoke, because at first I wasn't, I wasn't happy about it. But honestly, now I can say that I do love it, because like, we're so, we're so tight and like, strong, that people want to do things, they want to help, they want us changed. So like, everyone's saying that we need to be safer, and everything needs to be safer, but this is our city, and like, we can all do it together. It doesn't have to be just you guys or just us, we all need to kind of do it together. And for me and my peers, we can all easily like, meet up, it's not hard to meet up and get in trouble, but we need to make it just as easy to get together and do good things. Like, there's suicide and drug and marijuana and other stuff, they don't do it just because it's fun, they do it, it's like, you're missing, you feel like you're missing something, and that's what they go do, to fill that void, to fill that empty space in them that they feel that they need because they've been hurt, or whatever they've gone through in life. And they just feel alone, and they need a place to go. And to be safer, they just need a place like our youth group where they can come when they're young, and realize that God loves them and God has a plan for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Scott Miley, I've lived in this town for 40 years, and I've noticed that we have increasing crime really bad. And what's happening is our city's growing and our police department is decreasing. We need to do something about that to take care of the crime. My suggestion would be have a sales tax, but have a certain percentage of that sales tax that, like Santa Maria does, that goes strictly to the police and fire department, not into the general fund, because anything that goes in the general fund never goes, it goes to all your pet projects and everything else. We need to have something that's dedicated to the police and fire department. I'm up for this sales tax, it failed last time, and I voted against it because it went in the general fund. We need something that's, like I said, for Santa Maria, that goes to the police department and the fire. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hello, I've never been to a meeting before, so this, this isn't going to be very good, I don't think. But I've lived here since the 80s, I was here in the 60s. This town is going to pot, really, and figuratively, too. I think what you need to do is get the people of the city to work with you to clean it up. I think they need to clean up crime, they need, we need to get on their butts and chase them out of our time, our town. It's an easy mark here. And I think the whole town should work together, not just the council making up rules and things like that, but the city get involved in cleaning up their city. They really are interested in living here, they should be doing that. Maybe some of the youth groups could help the elderly with some of their problems, and make it a big thing. Now I see like Ventura has big programs with their city. How do they, how do the people afford to rent all of our stuff to do something for our youth? They don't. The city needs to partner with them and help them to bring good things to this city, instead of tax them or permit them to death. And I don't know how that would work, but I do think we should make it more uncomfortable for crime to be here. That's the only way you're going to get rid of it. And, and we're not, we don't have enough police to do that. And I don't know if there's civic groups that can help, that, oh, I see this going on, let them know so that they know what's happening. Anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Bridge, resident of Lompoke. I hear a lot of ways to spend money, obviously you can't spend money you don't have, and I've also heard just recently, tax. I think you have a responsibility to at least put your judgment in that. If you don't think a tax is going to pass, excuse me, then I can fully understand why you wouldn't support spending the money to put the initiative on the, on the bond. So the other place you get revenue is through economic development, and some people have talked about that. I'm used to, when you deal with goals, that they become real goals, and they become trackable and measurable and specific and reasonable. So the challenge I have with what I'm seeing here is, we just heard about the last five years of goals or 10 years of goals, I heard no conversation about how we did against those goals. Did you track them, did you measure them? You know, were you successful? Or are we just going to put the same goals up again and say, well, our goal is for economic development? So I would like to suggest one specific thing you could do for economic development, and that's reduce the regulation. Get the government out of the way. And then you'll see people come in here, opening businesses, then you'll see perhaps businesses not failing. So that's measurable, you could determine that. I think each of the goals, whatever you decide, there should be criteria, and once a year or once every six months, you come back and say, how are we doing against that goal? How was the counter? Did we reduce the number of people that had to... Did we reduce the number of people that had to come back and resubmit their requirements to get their permits? Did we have to have 400 permits when 300 would have done? Those kinds of things are measurable. So whatever goals you come up with, I will certainly support and work towards them as part of the community. But I would like to see some traceability, some reasonableness, and some tracking of the goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council and members of the city. My name is Jeremy Ball. I chair the local Economic Development Committee. But I'm going to speak on behalf of my own brain tonight, or today, with a couple of thoughts. I tend to shoot from the hip, so I actually wrote some notes to try to make sense. Lompoc, it's one of the greatest places to live on the planet. I've been able to travel. We have an average of 72 degrees. We have rockets going to Mars. We have world-class wine. That's the envy of the wine world. We have so much potential. We're sitting on a gold mine if we can put our thoughts in our minds together about how do we tap into this potential and do the dirty work of creating revenue. Some of you up here have been in favor of not having those discussions about creating revenue. You have, but you haven't suggested or sold to the city or to its citizens that perhaps talking about a sales tax, half a percent or a percent. I know we don't want taxes. No one wants to pay it. But we sit here and we complain. If we want the cops or the fire department to show up, we want them there in a minute. We want them to fill the potholes on our street. We want them to clean up and do this here. We want all of these things. But then when it comes to, how do we make that happen? How do we create some revenue? No one wants to go there. They're afraid to do that. So I'm going to talk about it just a little bit. So what gives? Why can't we thrive? Taxes, bad word. Spending, bad word. Revenue, it will figure itself out. It's not happening yet. People don't want to pay taxes. 75% of Lompoc voted to put taxes on cannabis when they were given the chance to do that. So there is an appetite for a discussion on creating revenue. We should talk about that more. Economic development is way more than just using money to, when you have it, and cutting when you don't. It's about thinking strategically on revenue. So we have a deficit. We have vacancies. There's not enough people at the city level to talk about these things. So I encourage the community and the city council and anyone in staff to take full advantage of the volunteer resources that we have. And that is people that sit on the Economic Development Committee, people that sit on the Public Utilities Commission, people that volunteer to show up and voice an opinion. If we can't afford to pay consultants or fill a vacancy to get ideas, talk to the community. We're here. We have ideas. We own businesses. We can find something that's a balanced approach that helps our entire community. So I hope that you'll take some thoughtful time sometime and talk to us. And we can tell you what other cities, or other neighboring cities have done to address some of these issues. Public safety, they got to pay for it. They've figured it out. We can do it, too. Just ask us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sylvia King. We've lived here for about 30-some years. When we were talking about taxes, years ago, when the transient occupancy tax was put onto the hotel bills and things, it was supposed to have been because it needed to fund additional police and fire, but it was put into the general fund, never to be seen again. So I think we really should redirect some of those funds for what they were intended. And, you know, we will never thrive as a city if we don't have public safety first, as everyone else, I think, has commented, because we can't attract good businesses if they don't feel that their employees that they have to hire will be able to live in a safe Thinking about the turnout this morning, which is nice and great to see, I think we also maybe could try to tap into more volunteerism from this community. I think people are willing. They just need someone to direct them and maybe start cleanup days, more, something that's a little more organized. And I think lots of people would show up and maybe help with the beautification of our city. But I think just, you know, a person here or there can't do it, but if we organize neighborhoods to do that, since we don't have a lot of money to spend on beautification, I think citizens would be willing to do it, but they don't want to do it by themselves because, you know, they need a little organization. So maybe we can start thinking on those lines and utilize the goodwill of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council. John Lynn, Lompoc resident. So goal-setting workshops are very important. They give us a window into the community. But I want to point out a couple of things because I like a bigger picture. First, we're a representative republic. That means each and every one of you was elected to represent the community, and I hope that you talk to people in the community. Secondly, each of you ran for office based on some things you said you were going to do or not do. And I hope you remember those things because, obviously, the public supported you and you were elected. It's kind of unfortunate that the survey that we just took or had our residents take was not based on the current goals and objectives of the council, and when I get done, I'll give you a copy, but on something that was four years old. So now, I guess I'm compelled to talk about some things that we need to put up on the board. The number-one thing everyone always talks to me about and continues to this day is bringing jobs to the community. And to do that, we have to have the land to do it and the will to do it, and we have to have a business-friendly environment at the city. Because in the end, at the end, the city is what causes businesses to come here or not come here or to leave. I had an interesting conversation with a business that's been here since 2011 and is leaving. We spent 30 minutes on the phone. I think they were apologizing for leaving. And one of the things that they said was that they had made calls to the city in the recent past, and they were not returned. And we just can't do that. We have to assure people that we're here to help them, and we're going to make them succeed in our community. We have a housing issue. We have this housing issue because forces that we have no control over at the county of Santa Barbara and from people who are outside of our valley have blocked our ability to annex land. And the projects that we have on the board now can't proceed for various reasons. So other people are trying to crush us, and in doing so, they've caused substantial increases in rents and costs of housing. Our senior community center, or youth center, is a failure. We have a beautiful building that no one seems to be able to use. In the foundation that I chair, we have a seniors committee. They can't use the facility. They go to facilities at various community rooms of developments because the fees are too high, and it represents most of the cost of putting on a program. Youth programs don't go there because they can't afford to pay the fee either. That needs to be fixed, senior community center fees. Several people have spoken about tax increases, and I think you all know I'm not in favor of them. And I would call to your attention the fact that the school district failed three times to get it approved. I question whether it makes sense to spend $250,000 for that. And I'll impose for 10 seconds. When I attended a League of Cities meeting some time ago, there was a presentation there from the city, and I think it was Rancho Cordova, where the city has a volunteer coordinator. That volunteer coordinator, in that particular year, had acquired $1.5 million worth of volunteer labor for the city for the price of one $40,000 coordinator. And another city who talked had a volunteer coordinator that coordinated volunteers and it cost them the office space. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Powers, and I'm a citizen of Lompoc, born and raised here. I left also and really didn't want to come back, but I'm glad I did. I love Lompoc very much. I'm also the Finance Human Resource Director for a local nonprofit, the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. So I get having no money. I'm all for, I'm going to put some check marks over here. I think that the citizens of Lompoc, it's always been a discussion that our police department trains police officers to go elsewhere. And it's like a not funny joke. Everybody says it. Why don't we pay them what they're worth? A livable wage is huge. And keep them here instead of sending them off to Santa Maria where they make double. Without a safe town, we're not going to get new people. And without money, we're not going to be able to pay them more money. So I'm all about raising taxes, and I think that for the most of the people in Lompoc, we know we're poor. We know about CalPERS. We'll vote to cover it, you know? Let's all stand up and pay the freaking money and pay the cops to do their job, pay for the fire. She doesn't agree with me, but I would vote yes. Because a couple more cents or dollars out of my pocket to create a safer Lompoc, I'm all for it. Youth, when I was a kid here, there was nothing to do but cruise night, and they took that away. So what did we do? I got in trouble. We need stuff for youth. What else is over there? Be a destination. I love that one. Because Lompoc could be a great destination. We do, the theater's going to be a happening thing. I swear to God it is. Our wine ghetto, the zoning laws that you guys are working on, kudos to you on that, to get food trucks in there, to have, people want to come here. It's a beautiful little town, and I wish you all the best for what you are having to go through. Thanks.
Thank you for your input.
Hi, Dan Kessler. I'm a business owner in Lompoc. Just wanted to point out a few things. My wife and I took a drive since we are usually late to everything, but my wife and I got here early today, and we took a drive down Ocean Avenue from Home Depot down to the post office, and just counted how many empty businesses there were. We counted 15. That's a lot. It's a lot of, that's a lot of empty businesses, and you should ask yourself why, you know? What's going on here? As for my business, I'm in the wine industry. I rely on tourism, and my business year over year with new visitors to our tasting room is down 17%. So Lompoc is just not a destination for people. So you got to ask yourself, you know, why is it not a destination? And in some instances, you just got to look around. If you see, you know, you're driving a car around, you see empty businesses, lots of homeless, no great places to have food, basically a poor street presence, you know? If you compare this to Newport Beach, you drive down there, everything's manicured and lawn, no homeless people, nothing. In my business, they're walking by all the time. And in general, there's just a lot of messy stuff in Lompoc. You find mattresses along the side of the roads and things like that that get cleaned up. Aviation Way, take a look at that place. It's full of homeless people who live in trailers, and they just move them around a little bit. But it's not a place where you feel, it's not Newport Beach, and so it's not, people aren't going to come here. One of the things I wanted to suggest, there's a town, my wife and I have been looking around. There's a town called Prescott, Arizona, which is about the same size as Lompoc. They are a pretty good example of, if you want to get better, find somebody that's doing what you want to do and just do what they do. And their police force is 68 people, 68 officers on their police force. I don't know what the Lompoc police officer count is, but I'm guessing it's a lot smaller than that. But they dealt effectively with a drug and homeless problem that they had there, and the effort was totally led by their mayor and their city council. And they were very effective in what they got done. So I would suggest you take a look at them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Leah Shaw, a long-time Lompoc resident. Thank you for holding the workshop. I will express first that my goal would be, number one, public safety; number two, economic development. I've listened carefully to everybody who spoke and took notes, and my time here is to paraphrase for you. It appears that there's a positive correlation between the public comments and your online survey, with public safety being expressed as the greatest priority. For example, 10 people spoke to that. And second would be economic development, with seven people specifically commenting on that. But some of these items are closely related. For example, infrastructure, housing, and the city image, and people using the word destination in regards to the city image was mentioned several times. Third would be the church youth programs, community programs. And fourth would be partnerships and volunteerings. In addition to goals that are expressed, some people made suggestions which are actions that could be taken to address certain goals but aren't part of the goal establishing process here. And those suggestions had to do with raising a sales tax, redirecting TOT tax to public safety, volunteering, having a volunteer coordinator, and instituting performance measures to quantify and qualify your goals. So that's just a quick synopsis, hopefully to help you get this sewn up a little bit faster. Thank you.
Thank you for facilitating the meeting, Leah.
I just kind of wanted to add something that God put on my heart as I was sitting. But the friend that I had that took his life, like, we weren't too close or anything, but from what I seen, just walking down the hallways and saying what's up to each other every once in a while when we saw each other, he was like the happiest kid you could know. So there's just, like, you don't know what's going on in someone's life. You don't know what they're going through, and it can be just like that, that they're gone. And the girl had a normal day at school, and then just like that, she's gone. So we, us youth are the future of the city, of our city, and I don't see why they all shouldn't be here as well, just like I am. I think there's a lot that the youth can do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Rankin. I'm a resident here for about 22 years. I also am director of a nonprofit in town, so I also know what to, how to do as much as you can with as little money as possible. One of the things I wanted to say, first, we're not, a lot of these towns, the people are talking about how great they're doing, well, they're either in very affluent areas or they're much larger than us. And I know we have very talented staff who probably could pull out more comparable communities that are about our size, that have our history in the farming community and wine and stuff. So I'm sure we can find some very good examples. Also, I'd like to just comment, the comment from Mr. Carver Hall has been mentioned about us being the armpit of Santa Barbara County. And I just like to say, in the Santa Maria Sun in January, I don't know how many of you saw, the comment by Jordan Cunningham also, that when talking about keeping doctors at the hospital here is that, well, if you're going to, it's about the same to live in Lompoc, the cost, if you're going to live in Santa Barbara County, it's about the same cost in Lompoc as elsewhere, and so your first choice isn't going to be Lompoc. And so apparently, we're getting it from both sides, and I don't know why that is, except that people have alluded to the fact that we're kind of, a lot of problems from other areas south of us are kind of pushed onto us, and I don't know what we can do to stop that. But I think Lompoc is a wonderful community. We love living here. We think it's wonderful. I know that Mr. Lynn talked about a volunteer coordinator. Of course, all of you know how many organizations in Lompoc are almost or totally volunteer staffed, so we already have a big commitment. Also, I'd like to say that as far as taxes, no one likes paying more taxes, but we also keep asking government to do more and more for us. So what our parents got from their city government is a lot different than what we expect from ours. So I say, good luck. We're all, obviously, have lots of ideas, and it's not going to be easy. Public safety is a very important academic development as well. We also want the arts. We want business. We want the arts. We want parks and everything. And I don't think you can kind of do one without having some of the other, obviously. So it's not just, I guess, ranking them doesn't mean that all the effort goes to number one and just, you know, but clearly, public safety is also, is very important along with economic development. So good luck, and thank you for holding this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, a resident, the adage saying, who gets what, when, where, and how? Um, I intentionally waited till the end of the meeting because I would like to stress that in this process, that we rely on sound economic evaluation of all policy. Three years ago, there was a study brought to the council that specifically stated that Lompoc was one of 76 cities that was on the verge of bankruptcy. It identified several reasons why. One, the failure to address the unfunded liabilities of the pension. Two, the use of one-time sources of revenue to address budgetary shortfalls, which was the sale of assets. Three, diminishing revenues at that particular time coming off of the We have a significant amount of population in this city that is not going to be able to bear additional economic impacts. We can't formulate the entire city policy on this, but understand that some of the problems we are trying to address here monetarily are the result of significant social problems and we're putting a Band-Aid on the result instead of addressing the cause. In many of the areas, the average income of the households is not even sufficient to cover the rent, pay the utilities. So what happens? You can't eat, you steal. When you can't play basketball or soccer or football, you run around the neighborhood and you cause havoc and turmoil. Please, when you're doing the budget, evaluate each and every policy and its social and economic impact on everyone. I once was one of these kids that ran amok. Fortunately, when I was a kid, I had coaches that went way beyond being coaches. I had counselors that were way beyond being counselors. And I had a community that provided me with scholarships and enabled me to go out and get an education and come back and contribute to my community rather than staying and becoming a menace to it. So please, consider everybody through this budgetary process, but most importantly in this process, stop ignoring facts. We already transfer approximately 10 million from the utility services each and every year to help solve the budget. Why isn't that being spoken of here? We need to create policy that creates more economic opportunity and when that occurs at all levels, not just the top or the bottom, we'll get a more holistic community that's good for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Kessler again. I just, I'm just interested in, in taking a look at all of the folks that are here today and thinking about the demographics of Lompoc and, um, the people that are here today are a minority in Lompoc and the majority is not really here. And so we're not really hearing them.
Seeing no one else approach the microphone, we'll close public comment. And before we take a break, there have been a few comments that were made that it's not time for staff to, I mean, for council to ask staff to ask questions, but there are two things that were comments made that I know, um, staff would probably appreciate the opportunity to just clarify. So while it's fresh on our mind, rather than coming back from a break, one of those is where the funds go regarding, uh, general fund money versus the police department, the library, the fire department, and how that relates to general fund. And then the second part about, um, the ability to actually fund things and, and having to su, find ways to underwrite the contributions many organizations ask us to support by opening up some of our facilities to them at either reduced or no cost. So if staff could clarify for us so that the community better understands their concerns and their desires and how we still have to factor that into, um, our budget considerations.
Just to, uh, clarify about when people talk about the money comes into the city and it goes into the general fund and, um, where does that money really go? Well, when you look at it, a good percentage, almost all of it goes to fire and police, public safety. And there's a little bit that goes around the table for, um, engineering, planning, library, rec. Um, but when you look at it and you look at police and fire, there's a good portion of the general government that actually just really works for police and fire to make sure they get paid, make sure their, their HR things are processed. Um, so you gotta kind of understand that, yeah, things go in the general fund and it doesn't look like everything goes to police and fire, but really when you think of taxes that we collect from our citizens, it's really to run, the majority of it is to run police and fire. So I wanted to clarify that.
And, and I think going into it, and we've had discussions, I know we brought it up at, at the December 8th meeting, Lompoc is, is different and not always in a good way when it comes to finances. So, um, I was in Bulton for a, a meeting a couple of days ago and hearing the levels and, and forgive me because I did not bring the numbers with me today, but I'm going to give examples. But, uh, the city of Lomp, uh, the city of Bulton was saying that their per capita on sales tax, we'll say, is about $12,000. And don't quote me on that, I'm just giving you an example. Here in Lompoc, it'd be about $4,000. So there's, there's this difference of all the different cities, how can they afford something? Or if you were to say, a large percentage of all the revenue that comes in to the general fund goes to pay for firing police. That doesn't mean they're overpaid, doesn't mean we have too many people. You draw back in a level and it says, what we bring in here in Lompoc is less than other cities. Um, a 1% increase in a sales tax for Santa Maria was about 18 or 19 million dollars. You do a 1% sales tax here in Lompoc and what'd we say, four to five million dollars? So it's, it's, the ratios are completely different. So, you know, I would love to say if we did a 1% increase and we got 18 million dollars, uh, we're going to go look and do it all kinds of stuff. But, but that four and a half to five million dollar increase with the 1% will get us out of a difficult situation. But it's saying, is it the panacea? Is it going to cure everything? No, it's, it's a breathing room. But others had said in here, we need to be a destination point. And I've been talking with the council and, and others, how do you become that? How do you, how do you change what we are today, which is really surviving, trying to get past, you know, another deficit situation? Um, it does take, and I believe another person had, had come up, I forgot which one, that we need to have all of the businesses, be it commercial, be it wine, be it whatever, we get together and say, how are we all going to come forth, work towards a common goal? Because I have heard there's disagreements between different factions and that, that doesn't get us all in the same direction. We have to, you know, plug the holes in the boat, get the water out and then start sailing in the right direction, all these, you know, crazy analogies. But without that, we're just going to keep bailing as fast as we can and, and that's not helping us out. So going back to, going to public safety, yes, they, they do receive already a very, very large portion of the total general fund budget. But again, it's what we're bringing into the city. If we brought more in, we could do more with this, with what we have. And that's the tough part that I've been working with the staff on. How can we come up with different areas besides adding a tax? You know, there's gotta be other areas to create something that becomes this destination. And I agree, there's, you know, the space center that was just talked about, that could bring in a minimum of 300,000 people. And I'm very skeptical when people come in, you know, my prior industry, I was doing a lot of different market analysis and looking at different ventures. And they had a very good laid out plan and, um, I said, yeah, that, that could work and that could do even better than the 300,000. And then if you take that and we build on it, that, that overused word synergy with another project, that could bring in more people. And you keep adding to our, our base, uh, we could actually have quite a bit going on, but it's that, that first genesis of getting this going. So I'm really hoping this will go forward with the space center. You know, if there's something else out there that can create revenue to put us above and beyond just what we need to get a breath of fresh air, that would, would be the best, uh, best part. I was talking, was it, I can't, I just peed. The other day, looking, you know, to the south, we have beautiful weather, as everyone knows, beautiful landscape. It's perfect if you want to ride on the, the streets for biking, but all of the mountains that sit around the side, I came over 15 plus years ago, it was, from Arizona and Phoenix has an incredible south mountain park and it's all mountain bike trails. And it is used tremendously for hikers and bikers. And you'll get all kinds of people coming in and they're staying there just to go biking. To the south here, it's not our property, which would be great if it was, but to go out and, and I sent this out just last week to staff saying, who are the property owners? How, how many of those could we talk to, to get some kind of biking trail system set up there that you could bring in people to the city? So there's more heads in beds, there's more sales tax in this restaurants and whatnot. There's all these different little pieces that we can do, but it does take effort from all of us, as was said, we need to come together. But I'm sitting here having to pull back and say, how do we get past the next two years? So that's, that's going to be the tough part. I don't know if I rambled or answered.
A little bit, but that's okay. Um, thank you for that input and for that clarification regarding predominant amount and only 70% of general fund does go directly to cover the costs of police and fires. So when we talk about revenue generation and where it goes, it goes into the general fund because that is our first and foremost priority. Let's take a 15-minute break so that those of us up here can get a chance to use the restrooms, get a drink of water, chat with you, and we'll return at 5 till 11. Thank So before I turn it back over to staff and council for a discussion, I just first want to say that it's really important to appreciate each and every one of you for taking your Saturday to come out and tell us your concerns, your ideas, and, and the vision you'd like to have for our community. The second part of this is that our first responsibility to all of you is a safe community. And without a safe community, we cannot expect people to buy houses even if they're, we get them built. We can't expect businesses to stay if they don't feel like people are able to get out of their car and get to their storefront across a parking lot. We can't expect new businesses to join us if, when they talk to current businesses, they feel it's unsafe, or when they're visiting and looking at our town, they run into a resident filling up their gas tank and ask them about their community, and all they can do is talk about the crime, or the lack of police response, or the inability for our fire department to be fully supported. So our first responsibility as a city, the reason we are incorporated, the reason we exist, is because you want us to provide a safe, protective environment for you to work, live, and raise your families. So I know all of us up are committed to that, and I hope that by the end of the discussion today, you will hear that public safety is important, and that we are going to dedicate ourselves to meeting all of those demands that make us a safer community, and competitive pay, and, and quality equipment, that our officers in both the fire and the police can do their job properly. So just wanted you to be reassured that, that this is a priority for us, and we definitely need to consider it number one, and I hope my, my fellow council members will join me on that. So I will turn it back over to our city manager to help us guide through looking at our goals, and reaffirming them, and then moving into our priorities.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the next piece is going to now be focusing on the council. So we're going to take the, the look of what was introduced from the public, but we're also going to go back to the original question, what does Long Polk want to be? And also then, take a look at what were the prior top-level goals of the economic development, we have them up on the board, public safety, parks and rec, infrastructure, code compliance. Is that something we want to look at? Do we want to maintain those? The other question is, how do you want to define those? As you saw in some of the examples, they took a, a code, or a goal, and then gave it a subset to it, or a sentence to describe what that was intended to do. After you review those, make any changes, add a subset, or a sentence or two, then come back to, oops. Then come back, and I'll flip up to the, I missed a slide here, I forgot to put it in. So we'll go back to the last time budget priorities that were to go into the budget, review those, see if there's any changes with those, and see how we want to attach those to the goals. So the first step is the goals, second step would be the priorities. If, I sort of threw this out earlier, if we don't get through it all, if we can get close to it, that's great, but if we don't get through everything, what we will do as staff is take what was said by the public, what was then said at that point by the council, try and come back and have them summarize, compile, whatever different way we can do it, and then we'll bring it back at the next, if we can fit it into the next council meeting, or the one right after that, to have a final discussion about what those should be. So if it's ready, then start with the goals, and then when we're done, remove priorities. These are my notes. And I guess I'd open it to the mayor to start the discussion on our goals, which may go back to those.
Okay. Councilmember Vega.
I didn't want to supersede you, but I wanted to mention something. I says, for, for the years that I've been on council, our goals have been very vague and just a heading. I'd like for us, as a council, to think about the severity of, of making goals and implementing goals, and it's been mentioned that goals should be trackable and measurable, which is a standard of any goal-setting class you can take. I think that all the goals generically set should have an element of all the department heads to have their input, maybe not today, but to come back and set a goal that's trackable and measurable for all of us to move forward with. The city manager, Mr. Troop, you, you mentioned, it's very difficult for, to hold anybody accountable without knowing where we're going, and each department is so unique. I think it's probably a disservice to allow any city manager to move forward with any just generic headings set as goals, and then ask you to go and fill in the blanks, and we don't, still don't know where we're going because it wasn't accepted as a council, and moving forward as, integrated with the public. So I'd like to ask that any of these goals, as we move forward, also come in at a later date with a plan of action from which we can talk to you about, hold your, your chief of police, your fire, and everybody else that's connected with general fund money to come up with their plan of action. And I think that it's imperative, instead of just heading everything as public safety, I think that police and fire are important in their own entities, and I think that individually, they should have their own set of goals from which we can take a look at, and the council can implement them, and hold the city manager accountable for moving forward and reporting back to council.
Thank you for that. I do believe that each of the departments has a master plan to which they speak to, from fire and, and police already, that is part of their, their goal-setting internally. So I know that those already exist, so it wouldn't be difficult to connect that back to broader goals. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, being the third time going through this, I mean, one of the things that we did the last time in the 1719, what we called goals, but now they're being considered priorities. But if, if I can go back to that, there was a question that, that came, came up, you know, where did we go? And, and one of the reasons why we went where we went was, we wanted to drill down, because we felt if it was too vague, it allowed opportunity to just cover everything. And that'd be like saying, make Long Polk better is a goal. What are you, what are you doing? So as a council, what we did in 1719 is we drilled down a little deeper, and a question was asked, well, what, what did you guys do? And we did this all with what we were told, balanced budget. We didn't take away from police, we didn't say, don't staff them. All of this was told to us, and I looked the former city manager in the eye, and I said, can we afford to do this? And, and, and the former finance director was there, too, can we afford this? And I was told, yes. And we did what we were told, yes. So if you look at what we did, economic development component, yes, we drilled down, in understanding we have a jobs-housing imbalance of 60%. That means if you have a job and you live in Long Polk, there's a 60% chance you commute for that job. And we wanted to try to give what we can to bring those people back, and we're working hard. City manager's working towards a LAFCO annexation. I think our, and economic indicators, housing starts, what, what's our net, one last year?
One start, negative.
Yeah, okay, so negative. How are we doing on that one? Well, we're trying, and it's not an easy process, it's in a battle. It's been a year-plus to try to get something annexed. It's, it's, it's young and insane. Business incentives, we're working hard with that. I know some people aren't pro towards the cannabis industry, but a movement that's moving there is going to bring us potentially 500 to 1,000 jobs. It's big. We have 28 or 29 businesses coming, underutilized vacant buildings are filled, it's huge. This is a green rush to another component. And we're doing it as a, as a sense, not to partner with cannabis, but to regulate cannabis, and not to turn a blind eye to cannabis. We are regulating the heck out of it. We're not, we're going to try to take it out of the alleys, unlike some of our neighbors who've said, no, but it's still happening. So we, we did a lot. Now, we, we boiled down to public safety, personnel retention. Almost two years ago, the former police chief said, we were going to lose 16 positions, we're on the ropes. And we dug deep, and through negotiations, we, we gave up to a, what amounted, for, for police, approximately 900,000 in raises, and, and fire was about 600,000 in raises. And, and police did give up three positions, and they said, it's better that we do that because we need to put butts in chairs, we can't keep them there. So we dug deep, and we did, we did something there. Can we do more? We can always do more. But remember, I believe public safety is not just how many cops are patrolling. Public safety is also a library component over here. And if you listen to what the library's doing, and what the library wants to do, whether we expand another wing with a, with a STEM facility, an imagination station facility, all those components bring an opportunity to our people, will help in public safety. You had a gentleman speak up when he was a youth over here, opportunity is what took him down a proper path. I've talked to several of the big former gang members in our town, and asked them, more, and that's why we went where we went. Retrofitted Fire Station 1, we heard some numbers. I know that they've been looking into grant opportunities there as well to try to do that. We know that that's an issue, and we brought that forward. Funding and saving plans, well, that's part of the AB 1600 a little bit, but also trying to be real with what we do or don't have financially. Rehab of Turfett City Parks, Thompson Park, I don't know how many people went there, but that's a significant improvement in that place. But can we do them all? No. But we do have a volunteer program out there, and those, I mean, myself and I know council member Starbuck have been killing gophers at Ryan Park for weeks now, and the dog show we hear is coming back, maybe not all related to us, but we put tons and tons of material there, patching holes, and we have other people stepping up for that opportunity as well. We're looking forward to Prop 68 grants, can give us up to $8 million in funding for deferred maintenance of parks. So we are doing a lot of this stuff. If I can get back to the public safety, a component that you're not hearing, and I've been graphing it, I didn't finish my graph, there's a lot of data, but we used to have upwards of 1,000 calls for PD a week. Our most recent one was 600, 610. Last week was 540, the week before that, 510. Since PD, doing the awesome job they are, have stepped up, and a lot of it had to do with taking care of the riverbed. Our numbers to PD have gone down 40 to 50%. You're not hearing that, but really, PD is doing an awesome job. Business counter. I've had an opportunity to observe the business counter. When I come in here, I spend a little extra time watching what's going on, and I've seen only one person leave upset, and that was because they got an accident out here and we didn't have cameras in the parking lot. They couldn't help that over there. I just got a call out the business counter, and what I've seen there in my observation has been great. They're very responsive, a lot of thank yous, and pointing people directions. I really can't, I think we've done well on that one. Upgrade restrooms in City Park with CDBG monies. We've done a couple parks, Thompson Park, we just finished Pioneer Park. So we are trying to meet our goals and to find something tangible and not just a broad spectrum. And I think that's why you see what we did in 1719 was to drill down some of those goals so that we could answer to the people of what we did, what the city did, and what the public did. So in short, we did step up, and we did give approximately $2 million in raises in general fund employees. Some of that money, we really didn't have, as it turns out, and that's kind of where we are in a little predicament we are in right now. I would say probably about a million and a half of that money we didn't really have, but we were told we would. So now we have to dig in, and now we have to get through this, and that's where staff has had to step up and hold some positions aside, and that's why we are where we are. It's not because council up here didn't say, "Yeah, balanced budget, we did that, and we funded it." So a lot of fingers get pointed at us, but we're doing, and we have to be able to believe what's coming forward with staff. And we got a couple hiccups there, and we got to get through it, and that's what we really need to do. Going back through my pictures, I didn't have a chance to put it out there, but kind of showing what Lompoc is now and what it was before, and it kind of, I think it kind of says a lot. There was a lady sitting on a shopping cart down in San Inez River fishing. That's kind of where Lompoc's opportunity is now, with educational, recreational, housing, jobs. And he just drilled back a few years of opportunity in the San Inez River, and here's a photo of what it used to be. There's a gentleman with a net catching a big steelhead, having a great time down on that river, and that's kind of where we are now. We had full of opportunity, and now we're struggling. There was a time, there was a motorsports parked down in the river for a number of years. Gone. And you guys all know the list. I don't need to go through the list of things. You've been here a few years, you see what's not here anymore. And just say, if some people say we always were commuter town, in 1990, only 40% of those people committed for jobs. And that's one of the reasons why we're having a financial movement we're having is we have, I tried to find the paper, but it's close to $193 million of sales leakage. That's where people are spending money who are living here, but they're not spending it here. And the city manager also gave us a report on what we're missing on property tax component with how we've embraced to a level of the low-income housing component. Close to $1.3 million was the high, I think, of sales tax revenue, I mean, sorry, property tax revenue we're not receiving. So I mean, when you see a lot of these things out there, we have to be mindful of where we're going. And again, getting back, I'm sorry, Councilmember Vega, for the answer, but you asked, "How do we drill down? How do we get these things?" And I think as far as a council, as far as a staff doing with what we've got, we've done a really good job of getting to these components here in our goal priorities for the budget of last time. So, thank you.
So our real direction today is to consider reaffirming the goals that we already have and to identify potentially some priorities or maintain the priorities that exist as part of direction staff can go back and implement into the budget. Hearing the feedback from our community about who are we, what is Lompoc, where are we going, I'm going to put forward a bit of a suggestion. We're still working on updating our vision statement and our mission statement and what we look like. So I think this is a great day to hear that information and provide support to staff to go back and finish working on that, so we can come back and present to the community what is and where does Lompoc want to go. So rather than trying to solve that problem today, I think we've had great input today about hearing what we want. Some of the things I heard were, "We want a safe community. We want it to be supportive of our youth. We want to be someplace you want to come, not just because you're visiting, but because you yourself live here, have taken a trip, and you're happy to come home, and you want to be proud of your community." I think that all wraps into helping us develop what is Lompoc, what do we want Lompoc to be. So I encourage staff to make those notes and work with us on coming forward with what is Lompoc and what is our vision statement about where we're going and where we want to go. To the point of goals, as Councilmember Vega says, it's always felt rather vague to just list the things that we're already responsible for and prioritize them. So we're absolutely responsible for public safety. We're absolutely responsible for the economic development, for parks and rec, for infrastructure, for code compliance. Those are what you expect us to do, and us just numbering them and flipping around doesn't necessarily empower you, the citizens, or our staff to look for ways to provide results. So I'm going to make a proposal, and I don't know if there's anybody prepared to write this down. I've made my own notes in case you need them, but I would suggest we have three goals. The first would be to ensure a safe and supportive city through a fully-staffed public safety department and fully equipped. Second goal would be to implement a community development program that improves opportunities for growth of residents and businesses. And finally, provide support and partnerships that empower community members and volunteers to support improving Lompoc. Those are far more distinct goals that incorporate our responsibilities, that then allow us to provide some of our current priorities and some new ones that have been suggested as objectives underneath those, that then staff could go back and apply to the budget. So my suggestion is to implement these three items as our goals, our overarching goals, to have council support that, and then identify if we would like to keep these budget priorities, and have staff identify under those three goals what they are and where they belong as objectives, for us to direct any of these additional new things that might go under these potential goals as potential objectives, and bring that back to us for approval. Because I think trying to drill it all down today might be difficult, but if we each were able to give a couple of priorities that fit under these three broad goals, I think that would give staff the opportunity to fine-tune it, bring it back to us, and then also finalize their budget. Councilmember Mosby.
Excuse me, Mayor. Could you repeat them one more time slowly?
Absolutely, sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the first one would be to ensure a safe and supportive city through a fully-staffed public safety department and fully-equipped department. Ensure a safe and supportive city through a fully-staffed and equipped public safety department. Fully-staffed and equipped safety department.
And just as a heads up, Jasmine had the best handwriting of all of us, so she is doing it today.
Mayor.
Yes.
Through a public safety department, is that what you said?
Yes, fully-staffed and equipped public safety department. I took out the double.
Departments, so just department.
Departments, public safety is fire and police. The second proposed goal would be And the final suggested goal is to provide support and partnerships and make that a possession by saying volunteers' ability to improve Lompoc. Each of these then allows us to go back to our budget priorities that we've already got on record and show where they can be implemented under these, and any new ones go underneath these to better provide direction to staff regarding policy implementation, budget, and improvements we need to make within the staffing. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
I take pictures faster than I take notes.
So you had the floor prior to the ask for repeat, Councilmember Mosby, do you still want it?
Yeah, I just wanted to
Okay.
Mention something else that is a looming thing that was mentioned out here, but it's also, if you read our Western City, League of City books, one of them has in here, is recognizing the pension obligation. And I believe there are ways that we can move forward to being sustainable with our pension. I think we have $115 million cash on hand. We have about 80-some-odd million invested, and maybe looking at opportunities to loan this money from ourselves. We're getting about 2% return. I think we're paying 7.5% return to PERS. We could have significant savings if we went out of, maybe a little out of the box, but borrowed that, some of that money, loaned some of that money to ourselves, borrowed some of that money from ourselves. I know inter-fund transfers happen. We could save maybe somewhere between $2 to $3 million bucks a year, but there could be a mechanism there that could save us a plenty. So I think a recognizing that pension obligation and being, call it creative, but legitimate on working towards getting that. I mean, it was brought to us, and we paid it off in 15 years. I think we saved, what, 45 million bucks, you said?
There's two different schedules that I analyzed, and it's closer to about $30 million if you jumped off the 30-year amortization and went to 15 or the 10-year, so.
Okay. And just as what we're talking about, some current items here, I think it's just as important to recognize that the paychecks we provide for the people today are just as important as the paychecks we provide for the people who are retired, and we need to make that solid. Because I think there's a lot of people out there wondering, if when they retire here, they're going to get a paycheck. And I think we need to recognize that, and it's a little out of the box from all these other things, but I think it can aid in our, as a broad-spectrum number, it's one of our biggest debts that's out there. I think it can aid so that we can do some of these other things and get real. But if I can, did you meant, let's mean, let's see, provide support, partnership, empower community member, no, where was that one? Implement a community development program that improves opportunities for growth of our residents? Or did you mean housing?
By residents, it allows to do both things, talk about housing, but also talk about programs that might be needed for youth and other things. So it's a broader ability to then say, youth programs are important, housing's important, because again, both those things affect our residents and would be delivered through a community development program and to community development staff. So you have to have individuals able to do the work and a program to do it, and they're all underneath that umbrella of work to do. So by saying residents and business, it means make sure that we're looking at things like housing, things like youth programs, things like business incentives, market incentives. So it's designed to be broad enough to drop several priorities under.
And if I can go back to number one, question for you on that, are, you know, there's been numbers for ensure a safe, supportive city through fully-staffed and equipped public safety departments. Some communities have parks and recreation in their public safety departments because they recognize better parks, better recreation actually affects public police, but
And that gives us the flexibility that if that's how we want to define public safety, we as a council can choose to do that.
All right, and so brings back to the point, if, what level of staffing are you talking about? Because there is a desire, you know, to go up to 70 or 80 police officers, sworn officers. Is that, is that in the number, or which number are you talking about?
So I think that empowers us to then talk about what the objective would look like to meet that requirement as a community, and there are numbers that are expected based on our population and the recommended hiring levels to provide the services that are needed, but then there are also recommended levels when we have additional programs we need to institute. So again, these are very broad goals that allow you to then go in and have an objective underneath it that says that public safety represents fire and police, or it represents fire, police, and parks. It, you know, what do we determine that to be and deliver that as an instrument of information to the staff? Then another objective could be to say, "We want to fully staff at foot patrol level." Or, "We want to fully staff," which would be one of my goals, "the gang, narcotics, and homeless units." And that's above and beyond your standard police department so that we could tackle additional things. So again, this provides a statement that then allows us to back into objectives that are deliverable by staff and have dollars associated with them in the budget that they can either let us know we can't meet, or how we can meet them, or what might be needed to do to meet them. May I add to your point about the CalPERS issue? I will even add a fourth goal, if you would like, that would actually cover that, and the suggestion would be, determine a sustainable, healthy financial plan that the city can address its major financial crises.
Not into a healthy plan, it needs to be sustainable, but it's
So we can take healthy, we can take healthy out. We can say, determine a sustainable financial plan to address city issues, major city issues.
I don't know if they're issues. What do we call them better than issues?
Find another word for me. I'm good with it.
Okay.
Do you address CalPERS?
How about there, that's enough, financial plan, period.
Okay. We can do that, determine a sustainable financial plan. Thank you.
But getting back to goal, I know if we put a goal up there and we not able to truthfully, financially meet the goal, is that a legitimate goal?
Yeah, so for now, it would be a goal that would be very tough to meet, that I would have to then come back to council and say, we can work on it if there is a different way to enhance the revenue. And it's just, that's a very broad enhance, somehow enhance revenue, then it could become a goal. If we're still in the same position we are today, then I would have to say that that's a goal that's not attainable in this budget at this time. But is it something that we do want to attain down the road?
And that's, that's why I want to be careful about setting up goals that we truly don't have the revenue for, because then that goal's more of a fantasy. I mean, you can have that there and stuff, but it's just very difficult to put something like that. Because like I said, then you're going to come back to us and say, you don't have taxes, but you said it was a goal, so therefore you need to have taxes. So I think we need to make sure that our goals are achievable with our current revenue base that we have right now. So anyhow.
Yeah, that would be one way to do it. We can try and describe it such that this goal is sort of like with CIP, our capital improvement plan, that this goal will be a five-year plan, or within the next 10 years, you know, whatever we want to choose as having it there. Because sometimes there is the initial legwork that needs to be started to get to that, so that might be an issue that if we push it out and say, we got to wait till we have enough money to do it, we might have that lag time that we could have been working on it before, just as an example.
So you turned your light off, Councilmember Starbuck? Okay. Councilmember Vega?
I think it's important that the goals that we set are attainable. I do have a thought process that means we're trying to set ourselves up for a tax measure in the future, so I want to make sure that that's not the only way that we can attain some of these goals. I'd like us to keep it within, keep them realistic. As far as the public safety aspect, I fully support that, but I just want to make sure that they are attainable within our two-year budget. And if we're looking forward, as the city manager mentioned, if it's a vision within a 10-year or a five-year, that's different. But I don't want us to set ourselves up to where a tax measure is the only way we're going to attain this goal. Just as you mentioned, it's unattainable the other way. The other part of it I wanted to mention is the community development program that you mentioned. It's similar, it's the same thing as the economic development program, and I want to, just the council for us to think about this, the general plan element of this and the funding element that's coming forward in the budget. So be very cognizant and make sure we understand that once we set these goals, that there's going to be an element of funding that's going to be attached to this. The providing support and partnerships on the third one that the mayor brought up, I'd like to see that the youth element of that, as far as provide support and partnerships that empower community members and volunteers, I'd like to make sure that the youth, and I'd like to invite all the people that are, the churches and all the nonprofits, to think about this, because we need your help. You know, instead of being on one side of the fence or the other politically, you know, I don't like this guy, I don't like this guy, put that aside. Bring your people forward and invite them to the council so they can meet us and we can immerse them. And I thank you for your coming with public comment, your son. It's important that we have all of these. Actually, you know, when you hear someone like that and you tell them, hey, there's nothing, there's nothing to do, we need some things to do so that we won't think about doing other things, and then we have people here that maybe the fear factor of maybe they're going to hang out with the wrong people. Well, I think it's really important, Mr. Federman, all of you, that you guys have a tremendous, the forces and the power that you guys have is really incredible, and I'd like for you guys to put all your bias or whatever your personal feelings are tied politically, come and help us move forward so we can make Lompoc better. We can't just do it the five of us up here and with city staff. You know, the city staff, we're here to make this thing and have the interaction between us. They were hired to do a job, they're not the enemy, the only thing is, how do we interact so the people feel fully representative in our movement forward and have our vision statement to say, we need to think about, yes, we're nonprofit or we're for profit, but do we have to stay poor? Okay? All of us want that opportunity so we can, so we can move forward. So those statements, as far as the community development part, aspect of these goals, we need to remember that everything requires a funding mechanism. The fully staffed and equipped public safety departments, I understand, but I am a little hesitant to see the fully staffed with equipment within the two-year goal unless there's an ad on here that this is a vision statement, moving forward in a little bit of a long-term goal, because I think police and fire need to be individual, separate in their proposals to staff. We need to hear from each one of them to see what their individual needs are. As a budget, as far as dean's concerned, yes, it's labeled public safety. But for them, they each have individual needs from which I'd like the public to come back and see what the goals are and what the city manager was empowered to follow up on with council, because it is the power of the people. Thank you.
To your point, I think it's really important for us to remember that for the past, at least the ones that I've been either involved in as a volunteer or having moved to being actually on council, that for the past several budget cycles, we have had very broad statements of what our goals are, and they've been reaffirmed across multiple budgets. So I would suggest that no matter what, our goals aren't based on a two-year cycle. Our goals are things we, as a community and as leaders, put forward as raising the bar for our community, and that we get the opportunity each budget cycle to reaffirm the goals and then set priorities under those goals that become a part of what the budget addresses. So while I understand your fear of saying, ensure a safe and supportive city through fully staffed and equipped public safety departments, might feel like that's a two-year mandate. What is the two-year mandate is the objectives we put under it. This is absolutely something we should always strive to be moving towards. We will never be completely staffed, and we will always be behind in equipment, because that's just the fate of the modern era. And we will lose people, need to hire people, need to buy new equipment, need to have modernized equipment. But as a goal, we should always be striving to do that. Now, take that goal, what are the two or three or four things under it that we could direct staff as objectives, we would like to see results, priorities we would like to see in the two-year budget cycle to get closer to this? For number two, it's an overarching concept that says, this is something we need as a community to pull ourselves up and drive it forward. What two, three, four, five things under that, in this particular budget cycle, could we move towards making this improvement? Getting closer to providing this? You know, maybe it's only one or two programs or opportunities that we can finance, but at least we're setting the bar higher for our community, higher for ourselves, long term. And as the next budget cycle comes through of 2019, 2021's over, and we start talking about 2021 through 2023, we can go back to this and say, you know what? We accomplished four of those things under number one. Now we have three more, that's still something we're working towards, let's reaffirm it. Or you know what? Somehow we figured it out, we're there, and now it becomes retain and support a safe and supportive city through fully staffed and equipped. So these ideas are not necessarily what staff is going to deliver, it's what the objectives are below that, just to better understand what the purpose of a goal is. It's overarching, it's much longer term, and every two years as a council, we get a chance to reaffirm, change, or improve them. But it gives better direction than just ranking the things we're already responsible for. Does that help?
Helps a lot, thank you.
Cool.
I do have one thing, if I could bring it up.
Sure.
Okay. I'd like to remind the council that we were empowered to hire our city manager, and I think it's our responsibility to hold him accountable with goals, not the department heads, not to think that we just show up on Tuesday and we're just, the power of the people is because we understand our role as being representatives of the people regardless of what district it's in. If we just give generic goals as we did before, which is our fault also for not addressing it, it's not allowing him to be successful also. We always need to remember that the contract the city manager has is because of something that was moved forward by consensus and approved by the council. So we, that's the power that we have, that's the power I'd like to empower him with to come back to us, to know that, hey, we're just not people that just show up on Tuesday night. I think it's important, I think he wants to be successful, I think the department heads have to answer to him. When we have staff recommendations on any agendized item, it's actually the city manager, he is the staff. So, and then again, I want to repeat myself, as far as the funding of the community development program, economic development, it's all the same thing. If we have concerns on future budgetary goals that are coming up that are part of this, we need to address these now instead of getting ourselves stuck in the mud. Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Starbuck?
Thank you. One of the things, you know, before we run out of time here, obviously, we have no measurable goals here. And I don't want a few of these things to go away, so what I'd like to do in the last couple of minutes of this meeting is add some inclusions to these off of existing budget priorities. Goal one, I would like to put the retrofit of fire station number one back on there. Even though it's been here for two years, I think there's been zero movement on it. I don't want it to get lost or forgotten. One of the new ones I'd like to put in here is, under public safety personnel retention, include the dispatch on that as a priority. One of the others is number seven on the business counter for community development. I don't think that it's all flowers and butterflies when you walk into city right now. There has got to be some work done on movement at the counter, in city hall, to get things going on. The attitude needs to be changed, is to tell me how I can, not why I can't. And you can go right through rehabilitation of turf at city parks and put that on here as a goal two for implement of community development, et cetera, et cetera. Market rate housing is part of the determinant of sustainable financial plan. These can be broken down into measurable goals. What have we done? Are we going to retrofit fire station number one in the next two years? No. But we can receive a report, we've applied for a FEMA grant, we have put away this, we're considering a bond, or whatever it is, as long as it's there and we can look at it. And so before we go, if we could put these previous priorities into the new goals, I think it would give staff something to work with.
I agree. That was going to be my next request. Councilmember Cordova?
No, I just wanted to, and I think you answered a few of the questions that I had in regards to some of the statements that have made by our fellow council members. When I'm looking at these goals, I feel like as a community, we cannot be afraid, and as a council, we cannot be afraid to address the actual issues that we do have. These things need to happen if we expect to have a better community someday, and if we expect to have a vibrant, you know, vitality business through our community. So these things need to happen. However, I am assuming that the priorities and the objectives are what's going to, what we're going to hash out and be able to say, okay, this is what we can financially do right now, but not to remove strategically, we have to plan for the future. We can't plan for two years. Two years is just going to maybe perhaps keep the water level right here, but it's not really going to get us to the point where we need to get. So if I'm running a particular business, and I know that this was hammered into me when I applied to sit on this seat, is you can't run government like a business. I fully understand that. However, as a business, if I cut the hours of my business, I'm cutting opportunity for revenue. If I cut my director of sales and marketing, I'm cutting my opportunity to be able to get new business into my, into my business, right? If I start cutting and cutting and cutting, before you know it, I have to close my business. So we cannot afford to take 100% the approach of, we're going to keep cutting and cutting and cutting. We have to make better use of the existing resources that we have while planning for the future and thinking, what are we going to do to bring in more revenue? Business friendly, all those things? Yes, let's get it done, but let's not hinder our ability to plan for the future because we are scared of what that financial number is today.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is that Councilmember Starbuck and several of you have already mentioned that our current list of council budget priorities should be retained. We should identify where those might fit under each one of these. What I'd like to suggest is that we have this budget priority list, we have a few that correlate back to it. Because of our time limit and being respectful of the community and each, and each other, might I suggest that we accept these goals, we accept this list of priorities, if anybody has an additional priority they'd like to add, have staff come back and have listed these priorities under those goals so that they match it based on the understanding. Rather than us trying to force something we believe it belongs in, and it's actually a contradiction of what our staff actually understands about the positions, the jobs, their knowledge of their work. Is that acceptable? Councilmember Mosby?
I got a question about a priority list. Are you prioritizing by one, two, three, four, or should this be set up as a random component? Or what are you asking on that?
Like, looking back at what's up on the screen there, to me, that's not necessarily one, two, three, four as it's written. It's, that's what we want done now. So as staff, you know, we move staff around, do things, they all would be in that sense something to work on as a priority. Now, if you had 20 of them or 100 of them, then I say, oh, hold on a minute, we do have to prioritize, but eight is a manageable amount that we can work through. We'll, we'll look at them as a priority for each one, but I was going to...
And the reason why I ask this, because it was set to us before by number, and the priority of numbers, as money became available, they'd do go down the list. So if you say that we can take numbers off there, we don't need a number component, then I'll, it'll take care of what I was going to do next, which is a ranking, but if you don't think there's a number, then I'd be...
These are all, I mean, these four down here are very critical. If it's, I'll leave it to council to decide that piece. I was looking at the prioritization, which we were talking, you know, comes from the previous budget, we're going to continue to work on those that we did not get to. To me, we were able to do number three, we got the retention. I don't think we've lost really any officers at the moment, if it has, it's only been a couple.
I think we lost one since we gave the raises for all those...
Right, I think that it helped immensely. So the other ones, you know, as we go through, if there's grants, we'll work on the grants, but those take a while to get through, so we don't want to just stop and say, that's the grant, we're going to work on it and forget everything else. We're going to keep juggling as many of those in the air as we can to keep working towards them. Same thing over here on one, two, three, and four. One of the things I was thinking about during discussion was safer number one, ensure a safe and supportive city through fully staffed and equipped public safety departments. And we can get a staff come together, we can meet, we can decide, because it was, people mentioned, you know, the library is essential to public safety, because where are those 60, 70,000 visits by children going to go? They're going to go out in the streets. Come up with what staff might say as, well, this is how we see public safety, bring it back to council, but at the same time, the true, what people consider public safety, fire and police, have them come back with, what is a fully staffed and equipped department look like? And then have a discussion with council to say, is it the patrol? Is it the drug? Is it the narcotics? Is it the gang? Is it traffic? Is it what? Because those will all add up. Riverbed, will that be part of it? So we can look at these four and then come back to council with what staff sees it and interprets it to be, and then you can tell us how to modify those if that works.
So what I'm getting is, you can take off the number one, two, three, and four as a priority, and we're going to look at them all equally the same, there's not a prioritization?
I'm going to leave that part to the council.
That's my recommendation that I get.
I'm looking at it as, we can work on all those. If you do have a prioritization of number one is one and two is two, just let us know that part.
And my recommendation is we take it off and we recognize them all equally the same and not any one is a priority over the other.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, one thing I'd like to ask Mr. Albro is that we do do a little bit of further look into prepaying our PERS obligation, a short discussion we had earlier, it intrigued me, and I'd like to make sure that gets under number four.
We do prepay, we try and make a one annual payment instead of monthly payment, that helps us save about $100,000 a year. I know me and Brad Wilkie have been trying to come up with different ways that we can attack the CalPERS debt, try and pay off different layers, and also maybe even do some financing within our city to try and tack that big debt and get it under control. So yeah. If I could, I would like to say something. You guys talked about, you know, I want to say thank you to all the... You guys talk about, you know, I want to say thank you to all the public for coming out. It's really important that when we start looking at a budget, it's not just numbers, you know, with the services, it's... And to see how the budget affects everybody, and it really makes my job, you know, better to feel like I'm, you know, giving back to the community. Well, what I want to encourage everybody to actually go through the budget book and look at it. The last budget book, we did a complete rewrite. We changed it all the way around. We tried to put narratives in there so the average citizen can actually understand what we're talking about, those services that are provided for you. We also try and make trackable and measurable items in there. We try and take your goals. It's very important that we... Everything you guys say, we try and put it into our narratives. We put objectives as far as what we're planning on doing. We put accomplishments, what we think we've done for those goals. We also put performance measures inside the budget book so we can, you know, make it trackable and measurable. So everything that you guys said today is really important, and I want to thank you guys again for coming in and voicing your opinions. They're really important.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I?
Yes.
One more. So just looking quickly at that on whether we want to continue with a prioritization one through four, just looking at what's above that and saying, okay, well, public safety has a number of checks on it. This one has so many checks, that one has so many checks. If you're looking at that, what we could do is come back instead of deciding, do you want to do that one, two, three, four, or it's all open? Let us come back and we can compile and state, here's what the numbers were. And that might be something you say, okay, well, 80% wanted this, 40% wanted that, such and such wanted this. And that might say, let's focus on number one first and number two first, or however the numbers come out. But that might be another way to have us come back after we compile everything.
And that's a possible solution, but I also want to remind fellow councilmembers, and of course, based on what the public has said and what we have as a city have been incorporated and created to do is our first and foremost priority is public safety and having a safe community. So while I agree that initially avoiding prioritizing the four goals above each other because they all have importance and they all affect each other's ability to do it, I'm willing to consider not numbering them initially and getting more information about ability to deliver on the objectives below that, the ability to deliver them in a timely manner and get some of that feedback, and then potentially reconsidering ranking them if it would help us deliver on those objectives below it. But I think more importantly, it will be identifying those objectives and numbering those so that you guys have direct direction, not direct, but direction to be able to include them in the budget. So I will agree with councilmembers Mosby, initial recommendation not to prioritize any of the four right now. I believe councilmember Vega, and then it will be councilmember Mosby.
I'd like to thank the public and staff for all the work. I'd like to reiterate here, I says, we have mixed feelings about not prioritizing, but I think we all agree that public safety and cleaning up this town needs to be one of our priorities. I mean, the loss of life and keeping our kids off the streets, you know, what I'd like is the public safety aspect of it, with the fire department and the police department to be really cognizant that we need their help in the outreach to the public and youth. And I encourage all of us to try and get a little closer to all these people. I think they're there to help. I know when we need them, we need them. So I have to say something, even though we're not going to prioritize, but my heart tells me and my gut tells me that that actually is where we need to start to clean up our city. Sustainability is an issue, so funding is something that we need to find. Our businesses moving forward and providing long-term sustainable income is really important for the success of our city. People leaving and going and you think somebody else is going to take their place is not a good... It's not a good... It's not good for Lompoc to be known for that, okay? I think that we need to retain our people, and then the long-term success is not how much money can be taken at the counter, it's how much sustainable income long-term can come back to the city in a longer timeframe. So I agree with councilwoman Cordova. Sometimes we work under a fear factor that everything's going to cost too much, but if we can't raise... We need to raise the bar here in Lompoc. We've been subjected to an over... The ratios of affordable housing and the ratios for homeownership, there's an imbalance here. We have so many people that are commuting here from here because of affordable housing, but they're not spending their money here. We need to turn that all the way around. So what we have is we have a leakage of sales tax because we aren't providing some of the amenities that most of you need here in our own city. I think sometimes it's an afterthought, and even though it needs to be sized correctly for our city, because the comparables that are being given to us from larger cities, yes, they have more revenue, they have more opportunities. So within our envelope, we need to see what we need for our cities, because if you can't go get a suit, you can't go get shoes, you can't go get your basic needs, you're automatically going to think of going to Santa Maria, Santa Barbara, or the Mall in Ventura, and Lompoc needs to be one of our choices. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
And I come back again to the ranking component here because there are many studies that are out there that says that hiring more cops doesn't just make a safer environment. It's providing opportunities, opportunities to the people, whether it's recreational, educational, as the library steps into, that we control. We don't control the school districts. Housing opportunities, job opportunities. And to say ensure a safe and supportive city, number two, number three, and well, potentially number four, if we have a financial savings, we can afford to do these things we want to do, also make a city for a safer city. It's not just putting more cops in cars, making a safer city. And again, like the photo I shared with you guys on the lady fishing in the river on a shopping cart, the river about 10 foot wide, I mean, that's kind of where we are right now. And putting more officers in the car doesn't make that river open again to the people, doesn't make it safer. What we need to do is, and like I said, none of those four should be priority over the other, in understanding that every one of those is the opportunity to make the city safer. And that's why I'm opposed to getting into that, because we end up getting locked in, and I can already project with a crystal ball what we're looking at. It's going to come down, PD's going to say, I need 78 sworn officers, and everything else on the list is going to be kicked out. Sorry, library. No money this year. Sorry, museum, we're going to take your money. And we're going to go down to the list that we're going to end up with the levels of a police state, and we don't need to take ourselves down that track. We have need to understand that a safe community involves a lot more thing, and I'm all for funding officers. Appreciate how they stepped up and assisted to get where we are right now. But if you prioritize to that component, I can already see what's going to happen. It's already being laid out to us, to everybody. And then they're going to say, well, you guys don't have money. So you're going to have to have a tax measure. And I'm going to answer why I'm opposed to a tax measure. This tax measure as proposed would have been over $550 per family in this town. And if you look in this audience, and Mr. Kessler came and said, half the town didn't make it here, I'll paraphrase a little bit, and they're not here. Tomorrow, you can go down to Riverbend Soccer Fields, you'll see 800,000 people down there, and you can talk to them. I've talked to them many a times about what this town needs, and they don't need $500 taken from them. That makes a decision whether their children have shoes, or they maybe have another meal, or they can afford the pencils to go to school. And it's been up here programmed that you need taxes, we need more taxes. You need to impoverish the people more. If you impoverish people more, already you have. And you had a gentleman come up here and mention about growing up in the neighborhoods and not having that and taking those opportunities and what will they do? If you take more money from the people, you're going to need more cops. You take more money from them, you're going to need more cops. And that's why we need to be careful about going down the slippery slope. And that's why my recommendation was to not to number our prioritizes, because they're all important.
Councilmember Cordova.
I just want to say that I fully support the comments that councilmember Mosby's making. However, I do think that we have a responsible police force that me coming into this chair and finding out the level of staffing that we have at our police department and the amount of work that gets done in this community, my hat is off to them. When we're saying that we're running a city with three dispatchers 24 hours a day, that to me is crazy to know that all we have within our department is three dispatchers. So I don't think that we need to go or that we're saying by setting our goals, that we're saying we're going to fully fund everything in the moon and the stars. I think that we have a very responsible police department that can say, these are our immediate needs at this time, and this is what would get us to the level where we can produce a level of safety and security for our community and still maintain that level of resource mentality that we're making... They're making, trust me, they're making miracles right now.
Thank you for that. I'm going to sing no... Oh, there comes the city clerk. Ask him for some clarity.
I would just like to have a vote or consensus so that we have it on record that this is your direction to our stuff.
Okay. So do I have a consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
I have one more comment, if I could, before the consensus.
I'd prefer just a consensus so we could get done. But if you must.
Nope, I must. Thank you. And really, I wanted to clarify under our priorities that the unfunded liability is part of this, okay? Even though I don't see it written here, because I think it's imperative that we deal with what's on the table.
I think it would be objective number one under...
Okay. I'm looking at my piece of paper.
Yeah. So yes, to add to it, I was going to close with after I got the support that we were to just clarify. So I have one, two, three, I know myself anymore want to give. I mean, that's the majority. Do we want a full consensus of support of these?
I'll give the consensus. Did I say yes?
No, not yet.
Not yet, I did.
I was hoping you would just feel the peer pressure and move.
Three times.
That peer pressure worked that time, didn't it? So for clarity, that we are maintaining the eight that we've had, and that dispatch was added to number three as a priority within that, and that addressing the CalPERS issue is the number one objective under determiner sustainable financial plan. That, I do believe that staff got that, but in case they hadn't, I just wanted to make sure it was down. So to wrap this up, because we are right at a little afternoon, and I will be really impressed that we were actually able to stay to our goal and prove to the community that we can get more done quickly. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is your community. Your voice drives us. So always reach out, send us the emails, make the phone calls, stop us on the streets, stop us in the grocery store. We have to hear from you to know that we, when we're making those tough and difficult decisions, are making ones that make you feel good and want to live in Lompoc and want to take pride in your community. I agree with councilman Cordova. This is not about instituting a police state. This is about returning our gangs, our narcotic, and developing a homeless unit so that we can address very specific issues. But we can't have those if we don't have enough manpower patrolling as expected for your daily safety. So let's get to that so that we can look at reinstituting and driving new specialty units to address our really big issues. We're going to look for ways to do that. We're going to look creatively. We're going to look to be more efficient with our dollars and prove that we're doing it. I think we have a staff that gets... You don't want to see the abuse of prior council and staff's inability to use the money wisely. They all get that message, we get that message, and that's our biggest goal, given the financial difficulty we're facing with the CalPERS debt that we must pay. Go out, pat each other on the back for doing this, share everyone with how we're moving forward, and keep coming to these meetings and regular council meetings. I thank you. We adjourn to the next regular meeting at 6:30 on March 19th, 2019.